And introduce some of the --
The case perfect.
Hold on one second, please. How's yours?
Check, check, check.
We've done that one already.
Here, why don't you do this? No, 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 it's not going to work. All right, this is better. Okay. So, welcome again, everybody. This is a public hearing. Sorry for the mishaps. Okay, so we're here calling this meeting to order. And the first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will ask Vlad to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully, this will work. Okay, so I have a few points to make regarding the rules of play for this evening. So everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to speak. We will begin with the appellant and/or his representatives. They will have 20 minutes, at which time every individual who wishes to speak will be allowed three minutes, and it will be strict. If you're planning on reading a document that's four or five pages, be prepared to summarize it. We have a big crowd. We don't want to be here all night, and so we need to get through this hearing. Whether or not we deliberate this evening is up to the board's discretion, and that'll depend upon, you know, how we progress and at what time we can, we basically end. And so we'll make that decision at that time. So here's the other rule of play. An individual representing a group will have 10 minutes to speak. Every individual who is forfeiting their time to the speaker will be asked to stand up, at which time the names will be called, or they'll stand up as their names are called, and then the individual that is representing the group will speak for 10 minutes. So groups speak 10 minutes, individual is three minutes. If you are planning to say what has already been said two and three times, please pass it to someone else. Making the same argument five and six times over doesn't necessarily carry any more weight. We read all the letters. There's a multitude. I think we're up over 190 letters. And so that, those are the rules of play. And before we go any further, let me introduce, to my left is Commissioner Leslie Duncan, to my right, Bill Brooks, and I'm Chris Philios. I'm the chairman for this year. And so I have to poll my fellow commissioners and myself for potential conflicts of interest.
None.
I have none.
And none for me. Typically, when you talk about a conflict of interest, it's a situation where a commissioner might stand to benefit financially, and you've heard that that's not the case with any of us. At this point, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Director Callahan. Director Callahan directs our community development organization. Before I do that, however, let me introduce some of the other folks. To the right is Kathy Ford. Kathy is our timekeeper. When the light goes yellow, you're down to, is it 30 seconds? And when it goes red, you stop. To your left, with the headphones on, is our communications manager, Nancy Jones; Mary Shaw, part of our planning department and a manager; Vlad Finkel, who is the planner on this particular case; Director Callahan; and civil deputy prosecuting attorney, Pat Braden. Without any further delay, I'm going to turn it over to Director Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. The newspaper, our Coeur d'Alene Press, our newspaper of record, created a problem for us today. In my experience, that problem is unique. In my entire career, I've never had a newspaper notice something in this fashion, because newspapers typically know that we had already noticed in accordance with law 28 days before this meeting. So in my view, your meeting is properly before you. However, with the mix-up, you do have options. Our legal counsel can opine as well, in case I'm missing something. But among the options to you tonight, and especially if you have any interest after you've heard all of the evidence that you might deny this case, you must have a second public hearing, because that's a matter of the Land Use and Development Code. In the code, it expressly says if the board's going to take action significantly different from what the hearing examiner has recommended, there must be a second public hearing. That would uncontestedly fix the, any notice issue there may be for tonight. So that's one option. You, of course, can always choose to take testimony in a night like this and then continue a public hearing. That's part of your regular routine, and we could find a different venue if you want to find something larger. So that's a second option. But again, I believe that the Coeur d'Alene Press has acknowledged in writing to me that they made a mistake. Their managing editor, Mike Patrick, said that in email to me. They noticed on their webpage and on their Facebook account that they had erred. Similarly, the library, Coeur d'Alene Library, where the newspaper said this venue would be held, also noticed on their Facebook page and in the front door of the library that this is the proper venue. So I believe you're set to go for any length you want to go tonight, and in accordance with law. A couple other quick things, just because this case has drawn a great deal of interest. It's something the staff deals with on a routine basis, but the public wouldn't know. We routinely refer these things out in cases like this to our sister agencies. In this case, Panhandle Health District, the Department of Lands, Idaho Department of Lands, the Department of Transportation, and others, and they give us their response. We are the ones that collect that response, make an informed opinion, and give it to you in a staff report. But that's our review of those other agencies. You, of course, get to take all other evidence there may be tonight and through the written record, and make your own informed decision. So you are not in any way hamstrung by what other agencies have said, what the staff recommends, or even what the hearing examiner recommends. You are the final decision-maker on these matters. I am mindful and I understand that this sort of venue is not conducive to the back-and-forth people would normally like to understand these projects. Tonight's hearing meets the due process of law that's required by law, but it doesn't help people really understand what's going on. For those that don't know, the staff is always available, as am I, to discuss these matters ahead of time, before any hearing, before the hearing examiner hears it, before the board hears it. And we can do that in any venue that's comfortable, in person, at our counter, in our office, I mean, over email, over the telephone, whatever works for you. So please feel free to reach out. Vlad has done a great deal of discussion, but of course, in a case like this where there's great interest at the late breaking moment, there's a limit to how many people we can reach. One of the things that has been problematic and concerns I've heard from the public is how it is that we can go forward with something where we don't entirely know what uses may be on the water. And what's going on there is, again, we're, we use referral agencies or comments, such as the Idaho Department of Lands. But they, in this case, Idaho Department of Lands, I mean, are ultimately responsible for whatever uses land in the water on this project. We can't control that. We do our best to understand the application, to make an informed and professional response, but ultimately, we must rely on other agencies for their jurisdiction, authority, and decision-making. We can't force them to work with us. We can't force them to step in in this process. We are really a conduit in a referral out to say, here's what's going on, in this case, IDL. Would you tell us what you think? And then we take that information and run with it. I believe that covers everything that I wanted to get across tonight. Did you have any questions? Let me before I turn things over to Vlad.
Leslie.
To the staff recommendation.
I'm fine.
In this case, Vlad Finkel will take the case forward for the rest of the evening. Of course, we're here if you have questions.
Okay, so officially, this is case number ZON18-0016. It's a request by John and Gail Akonin Living Trust to complete his own change from restricted residential to commercial of a portion of a parcel consisting of 107.59 acres. And by the way, the deputy gentleman to your right is Lieutenant Higgins, so he's here for our safety. How's that? Vlad, the floor is yours.
Good evening. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County Community Development. I'd like to thank David Callahan for introducing some of the nuances of this case that we have dealt with in the course of last few months. As you just stated, Chairman, this is case number ZON18-0016 by Mr. and Mrs. Akonin for a zone change of a portion of property from restricted residential to commercial. Apologize, we're having some issues with --
We've heard it from here.
The subject parcel of land is located in the Wolf Lodge Bay area on the south side of the bay. It is bisected by Highway 97. As stated, it's roughly 107 acres in size. The portion of the property that's the subject of this request is this little peninsula that measures approximately half an acre in size in any sliver of land that's above the ordinary high-water mark on the north side of Highway 97. We don't know the specific acreage, but it's very minimal. The zoning of the --
Can you raise it up?
This is for us.
Oh, they can't see it.
The underlying zoning, as stated, is restricted residential. The parcels to the east are zoned commercial, and it has KOA campground on that site. The property to the north is also zoned commercial. Properties to the west are zoned restricted residential along Coeur d'Alene Lake, and parcels to the south are zoned rural. The comp plan designation in, on this property is shoreline. And this has been one of the questions that has been raised by the public in numerous responses. How does this request adhere to the goals and guidelines of the comprehensive plan? Based on review of the comp plan, this designations, this designation allows non-residential and uses limited to services needed to support resource seasonal, shoreline, and recreational uses. The applicant wishes to utilize the peninsula area, should the zone change be approved, for purposes of a staging area for equipment and material for a dock operation business. We, as staff, felt that the request to use said site was consistent and in line with the policies of the comprehensive plan. Some of you may not know this, but this peninsula is located fully within the flood zone area. So for purposes of assessing the ability to develop this site, we did some analysis on site constraints. Based on the commercial setback requirements, based on the floodplain requirements, based on the requirements for setbacks from the lake protection buffer of 25 feet from the ordinary high-water mark, we estimated, and that may not be the most accurate number, but it's within the vicinity of 2,700 square feet of available space to develop this site. It's very small, but nonetheless. As you can see, these are some of the photos of the property in question. The centerpiece of this peninsula is fairly flat, and then it slopes towards the lake. Through the agency comment period, as Director Callahan had stated, we received numerous comments from various agencies that have jurisdiction. Idaho Department of Lands have stated that future permits will be required. As of today, we are, we have, we aren't unaware of any permits that have been submitted to them for review. I am assuming that they're waiting for the decision to be made on this matter before they move forward that direction. The Idaho Department of Fish and Game have stated that the Cooconee spawning areas do not exist adjacent to this property because of the shallowness of the lake. However, there is a bold eagle feeding area in this area, as many of you know, that draws a lot of tourists. And one of the points that was brought up by the IDL official, I'm sorry, by the Fish and Game official, is that it's unclear how much of the improvements will be made on the water and how far it will encroach into the lake that may cost for it to impede onto any of the fishing spawning areas. So at this time, it's unknown if that would have any impact. Army Corps of Engineer and Fire Department did not have a response. Panhandle Health District had no objection to this zone change request. The Burnla of Land and Management, BLM, had stated that they do operate a boat launch a quarter mile to the west of this site, and they did cite some concerns with regards to traffic safety. However, they remained neutral. The Idaho Transportation Department, at the beginning of this year, in January, issued a restricted access approach to this site. And the restrictions are right in and right out, and that the maximum allowed trips are, peak trips, AM and PM were two per hour. So in order to assess the road conditions adjacent to the site, staff had conducted a site visit and prepared a little video simulation, both driving east and west adjacent to this property. We are approaching the BLM boat launch parking area where the applicant would likely have to conduct a turnaround in order to comply with the right-in, right-out approach restrictions. So this slide is going to be the video simulation heading east. So this slide shows the location of possible turnaround for that the applicant may use the boat launch, which is a quarter mile to the west, and then also the mineral ridge parking area that is approximately a little over a mile and a half due west. I would also like to reiterate some of the code requirements. A typical zone change does not have conditions of approval that are set forth in the order of a decision. However, it may have a conditional zoning development agreement that is either volunteered by the applicant, suggested by staff, or requested by the hearing examiner. Set document sets specific limitations or sideboards on this future use of the site and the mitigation components for any of the impacts associated with the use of that site. I would also like to talk about the special notice permit requirements. In the event this zone change is approved, the Cooten County Land Use Code states that any commercially zoned property along state or federal highway requires a special notice permit for assessment of traffic impact, landscaping, screening, and buffering requirements. That document or that approval that is administratively made sets parameters for conditions of approval for mitigation of the impacts also. The special notice permit would address similarly the same issues as a zoning development agreement with a zone change request. So the first hearing that was held on this matter took place on May 16th of this year. The hearing examiner at that time took a lot of testimony, and after the fact, recommended that the applicant come back within 90 days with a conditional zoning development agreement to address the specific limitation of future use and address some of the concerns that were raised by the public by means of mitigation of things that are related to potentially traffic, aesthetics, environment, and tourism. So the applicant, over the course of next couple of months, submitted two different versions of the zoning development agreement. Staff had gone over some of the concerns that were raised, and the applicant has made some changes that then moved forward to a public hearing. The zoning development agreement set sideboards on site, improvements, estimated vehicle trips, those that were vehicular and commercial trips, and also one of the key factors that was requested in that document was the request to forego the need for a special notice permit should the zone change be approved. The argument that was made is that the zoning development agreement would serve that as the tool for addressing any mitigation. So that on October 17th, the hearing examiner held a second hearing on this matter, and subsequent to that, based on the testimony heard that night and based on the recommendation by staff, the hearing examiner recommended approval of a zone change. However, one of the key factors to the zoning, to the zoning development agreement was the revision of the vehicle trip section, which limited to what was approved by the ITD officials with the original approach permit, not what was estimated based on the number of employees by the applicant in their original CZDA. And the second one was the removal of the provision to forego the need for a special notice permit. So what that means, if the board chooses to move forward with the recommendation by the hearing examiner and approve this request, the zoning development agreement would not include the elimination of the special notice permit. It would still be required after the fact, and it would assess some of the impacts and mitigation, and would likely, would go through that process and be approved administratively by the community development director. One of the things that we did receive last week after the comment period ended from ITD official, and it's included in Board's folder, is that the hearing examiner's recommendation and the CZDA modifications were consistent with the original access approach permit that was issued. And one of the other things that was raised by the public is whether the physical improvements to the approach permit were consistent and compliant with ITD requirements. And the official stated that the approach width is within tolerances allowed by ITD. So to recap some of the public comments that we received over the course of last couple hearings and for this hearing tonight, we have received over, as Director Callahan stated, over 190 comments. We have received 170 comments up to the end of the public comment period last Monday. For the first hearing, we received 30 comments in opposition with one in support, two comments in support, and 40 opposed for the second hearing. And between the last public hearing before the HE and the cutoff date last Monday, we received 92 opposed and two in support. After the closing of the public comment period, we received at least three dozen comments in opposition, and as of this morning, we received a petition of close to 200 comments in support of the request. So that's just for your information and for your review. So to sum up some of the concerns, I put them in these different categories. The first one, of course, with the traffic safety. The second one was the environmental impact. The third one was the negative impact on the tourism in the area, and the last one was the negative effect on the visual aesthetics of the scenic byway. The applicant had also submitted last week before the end of the comment period, a conceptual site plan, and we want to make it clear that it's a draft conceptual site plan. It's not something that was closely reviewed by staff for compliance with any of our building and site disturbance permit requirements. It's simply an illustrative for assessment by staff and for viewing to the public to understand what is likely going to be located on this property should the zone change be approved. As you can see, it has a three-point turnaround parking area for large commercial vehicles. It has a small office building for staff. It has a portable restroom facility. It has a boathead and a dock. The location of these improvements has not been reviewed or approved by staff should the board decide to approve the zone change. If that takes place, staff will have that opportunity through the special notice permit process. And this is the last slide, basically recapping the location of this request, and I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Questions for Vlad? Vlad, you, when I reviewed the file, there was an indication that ITD had failed in subsequent, in subsequent attempts on your part to secure certain information. Has that since been provided?
That's correct. That statement was made prior to the last HE hearing on October 17th.
Okay. Any other questions for Vlad?
Vlad, I got a question for you.
No, sir.
Sir.
Sir, excuse me, you're out of order.
Okay.
You'll have to wait your turn. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, if there are no further questions for Vlad from the staff, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant and/or his representative, Rand Wickman. Join us, Rand.
My presentation is up there. And Vlad, you have that. Good evening, Commissioners. Rand Wickman, for the record. My address is 2992 East Gotham Bay Road, Harrison, Idaho. And yeah, it looks like this is not going to advance it. So Vlad, if you could go ahead, one, or Mary, thank you. Vlad covered the location of the request, so we're just going to blaze through these first couple of slides. So he's got that covered, so let's go to the next one. That is the peninsula. Let's, you've seen that already. Here's our surrounding zoning.
Can someone point the projector so the graphic is at the top?
Yeah, we can't, we can't see that.
It's at the bottom of the screen. Point it so it's at the top.
Can we make a change?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Sorry for that.
Whoops. Go back up. There you go.
Can you move the projector?
I believe the problem is actually set...
Can you put it under it?
No, sir. The problem is...
It's not a standard projector.
The projector's in the ceiling. It's set by our IT staff. We can't actually control it from here, cannot control it from here, and we just, you saw, we just tried to change the image on the screen. This is as good as it's going to get for tonight.
Okay, let's proceed.
Thank you, Commissioners. As I was saying, the zoning, we are contiguous to commercial zoning, and we have some commercial uses in the area with Camp Coeur d'Alene to our east, and we have the former site of the Fish Inn up here, for those of you that have been around for a while. And then, of course, we have the BLM's boat launch to our west. Go to the next one, Vlad. The history of the site, you know, in the late 60s or early 70s, the site was used for the Green Dolphin Floating Restaurant, and there you see it there. It predates my time here. I can't offer an opinion as to the quality of the food, but regardless, the, it looks like my kind of place, but it, just to show that the site has supported commercial uses in the past. After the floating restaurant closed its doors, the property was used as a float home for a while, and then it went into a long period of non-use. As Vlad showed you earlier, this is the site plan. It's an illustration of what we propose to do on the property. The site imposes some real limitations on what can be done on this property. There does not appear to be a suitable site for a septic system. The driveway approach has some limitations due to site distance, and we'll talk more about that. But suffice it to say, it isn't suitable for most commercial businesses. It's not suitable for residential use as it's zoned either. But my client wants a zone change to allow for minor improvements so he can load and unload barges and marine vessels in support of his business, North Idaho Maritime. This use isn't new. Prior to it becoming North Idaho Maritime, the primary business for this company was towing log booms for the timber industry. As the timber industry declined, the business evolved to provide a broad spectrum of marine services such as barging and dock repair and construction. These are things you can't do with hand tools and a john boat. It requires big equipment, and big equipment requires a place to load and unload. And until recently, North Idaho Maritime transferred materials from land to water and vice versa at this site on the Spokane River. It's right here is where it was actually on the river. It's just west of the area that's now Riverstone. The property is now owned by the city of Coeur d'Alene, and maintaining a facility for this kind of use is not in the city's plans. Coeur d'Alene's like many other public agencies that use the services of North Idaho Maritime. They need the services, but the camper won't accommodate his activities on their waterfront properties. Here's a partial list of the agencies that North Idaho Maritime has worked for. These are public agencies. You're familiar with it. Cooten County Parks and Waterways uses them regularly. There's the Sheriff's Department, Army Corps, Fish and Game, U of I, Post Falls Park and Rec, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, and so on. There's an even longer list of notable private entities that rely on North Idaho Maritime services to keep them in operation. You can read the list there. I don't need to go through it, but there's some notable ones there, especially Avista, Potlatch Corporation, Hagadon Corporation, and so on. For North Idaho Maritime to provide the services they do, they need an appropriate location to transfer materials and equipment. And so, if it isn't becoming obvious, the request is in the public interest for numerous reasons, and most importantly, this activity cannot be conducted from public boat launches. It's incompatible with boat launching. It would plug up the boat launch for perhaps an hour or more at a time, and there are safety concerns with, you know, transferring stuff if you've got people running around who aren't part of the operation. So it is not conducive to public, doing this activity at a public boat launch. My clients looked for years for an appropriate location for this activity. Actually, oh, sorry, let me finish the list here. It's also necessary for removal of lake debris. Docks don't last forever, and, all right, docks don't last, I think that's on. Docks don't last forever, and they don't evaporate when they, when they die, and so they have to be removed from the lake. And in order, and docks are notoriously difficult to cut up and remove. They're heavy, and, and they're difficult to cut up because of what they're made out of. And so that requires a place to remove them from. Again, you can't do it at a public boat launch. And so it's necessary for removal of lake debris, and that includes the floating logs that sometimes show up on the surface and are deadheads and are obstacles for boating traffic. It is necessary for, to provide the service to activities on the lake for waterfront owners. You know, waterfront owners are in regular need of maintenance of their dock facilities, but we also occasionally have a need, and the county has an MOU with North Idaho Maritime for emergency response. You just approved one in August of this year, and that is working with the Sheriff's Department. When there's an accident or some, some issue on the, on the lake that requires the type of services that North Idaho Maritime provides with a barge or what have you, they are frequently called to assist your Marine Division or your Parks Department with their issues, and they are your go-to folks. And then lastly, the, the lack of a proper facility for them to transfer materials would add significant costs to public projects. You will recall, I'm sure, you recently had a bid opening for a breakwater, new breakwater down in Harrison. North Idaho Maritime was the only responsive bidder, I'm told, and it's because they're the only one with the equipment and horsepower, basically, to take on a job of that order. They need a location to be able to do that. Lacking a location to be able to transfer materials to the water will add significantly to the cost of public projects. Now, my clients looked for years for an appropriate location for this activity. With the closing and redevelopment, redevelopment of each mill site, existing sites were lost. For a while, these activities could be accommodated on Blackwell Island, and as redevelopment has occurred there, that's no longer an option either. With no options on existing publicly-owned waterfront, my client sought property that could be purchased for this purpose. As a practical matter, there are no other options that we're aware of, but the current site is actually well-suited for the use. It's in an area of commercial activity. There are no nearby residences. The closest one is over a half mile away. There are no nearby residences, nearby residences. The closest one is over a half mile away. It has highway access. It does not have steep slope, so they can get equipment in there and access the waterfront. And it is a good use for otherwise unusable property. So here we are. We've been in this zone change process for over a year, and the reason for that is we have chased down and resolved every issue that's been put before us. The most recent of those was a hearing examiner's request for a conditional zoning development agreement. And we are on our third or fourth draft of that. The current draft is dated October 30. That's the nature of that process, goes through several innovation, iterations. That development agreement limits the activity on the site, what we're talking about. We can't put a McDonald's in here. This is not an, an open commercial zone where you're going to have other commercial uses pop up. It memorializes the owner's commitments. It provides the county with additional enforcement options. And the draft, the most current draft we've got was recommended for approval by the hearing examiner. Now, actually, let's stay with that one for a second, Mary, if we could. We did not include anything in the CZDA that addresses areas below the high watermark. And let me just address that for a moment. We've been open and straightforward about our intended uses at this site. There's no intention to have dock storage in Wolf Lodge Bay. You may hear about that tonight. That use will likely continue in Cougar Bay, where it currently exists. The activities on the water are not included in the CZDA because they are outside of the county's authority to regulate. And we do not want to confuse the issue by including them here. We should not imply any authority of the county to regulate encroachments on the water, when in fact, the law specifically preempts that. The activities below the high watermark are regulated by the state under the Idaho Department of Lands and will be permitted through their permitting process. We have committed in the development agreement that we'll comply with IDL's requirements. If we do not comply with IDL requirements, as determined by IDL, under the terms of the CZDA, the county would have the ability to revoke the zone change. So let's turn now to the matter of Highway 97 and the approach to this site. As Vlad indicated, we have a valid approach permit for the site, issued last February. The approach has since been improved to meet the requirements of the permit. Vehicles are limited to right turn into and out of the site, right turns only. And traffic into the site's limited to four to six vehicles per day for the permit and two trips during the peak hours. Go to the next one, Mary, if we could. Here's a picture of the improved approach. This is after the permit was issued. We went in and fixed it. That does not show the, the right turn sign, which followed a week or so later, which has now been installed. And, and so, we also, if we could go to the next one, Mary, and, and play that video. If you can get that to play, play button on the bottom there, I think.
The screen's different from yours.
It played earlier. We tried it earlier. So there was a question and concern about whether we could actually get the kind of vehicles in here that we had contemplated or that we need to use at this site. And so, so what we did is, we had a log truck with, full of logs come and, I really hope this plays, because it's really good to see. So we, we took a video of a log truck pulling into the site, turning around, and pulling back out.
You want to come back to it, Rand?
Yeah, if we need to. And so, I'll just, while he's working on that, we can stay with it there, so. But out of, out of an abundance of caution, then, even though we're confident that this works for the kind of vehicles we need, we had another engineering firm take a look at the approach concerns in this area. And Bill White from Toothman Orton prepared a memo for us. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, so I've asked Scott MacArthur from H2 to summarize that. And he will do so in his presentation following mine. Another concern, that's all right, if you'll keep working on that, I'll keep going. So I don't need the presentation for, or the PowerPoint for most of this. So another issue of concern has been the bald eagles and the coconie. And we expected this concern. We hired a biologist to evaluate the site and the project and whether this use was likely to have any impact. The short answer is that we don't have any impact because of the timing on when this site is used. Here we go. Let's watch the video. So again, this is, this is the largest load that we would ever have come into this site. And it wouldn't be logs. We don't bring regular logs in. We would perhaps have some cedar floats or something like that. But this is just a load of timber. But it's the same size truck with the same abilities. And so you can see, turned in there without any issue, didn't inordinately delay the traffic getting turned into the site. Pulled in, the porta potty in that tree probably would be relocated to make this maneuver a little easier, so he could cut the wheel a little quicker. But you'll see here, he's able to turn around without a whole lot of back and forth. He's able to turn that around in one motion, and this is, and he would back up to, if he were going to unload onto a barge there, he would back up onto the area with the bulkhead. And he would be unloaded, or vice versa. He would be loaded. And then, he turns up. He lines up for the approach. Waits for oncoming traffic. And you can see, you have good site distance in that direction. And as we're limited to right turns only, you can see, got the car coming. He waits. You can see, he didn't have to go back and forth a bunch to try and get lined up or to get turned around there. Truck passes. He pulls out. He stays entirely within his lane. Without any drama, without any problems, this site works for those size vehicles. Simple as that. So let's go back to the issue of bald eagles and coconie. If you would go ahead, then just, that's the, let's go one more the other direction. There we go. So we had asked David Arms to give us a report early on in this process on the impact on coconie and bald eagles. He has done that. His report's in the file. That's the document on the left. Fish and Game has also responded without concern. David will present his report following me here in his three minutes. And because I'm about out of time, I will, I can wrap up there. I'm comfortable with that. And David and Scott will follow me. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I'd be happy to come see you again in rebuttal.
Questions for Rand?
I have operational questions. Should I wait for John, or you want me to ask you?
Why don't you fire him at me, and if I need to get some assistance, I will recruit it.
Okay. Right now, is there any traffic for Maritime's business going beyond that location on 97?
Yeah.
So currently...
John, why don't you come up here?
Yeah.
If, if that's all right with the chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
And identify yourself.
John Condon, for the record, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. So if you're referring to like projects, we actually, you know, do serve customers along the shoreline on 97. Currently, we still transport by barge from the former location under an agreement with the city. Now, what we, if this is what you're asking, currently, if we don't have this facility, you know, we can haul approximately 20 truckloads of material on a barge down the lake. And if we don't have that ability, you will have an additional 20 trucks on that very road. And so we're just as concerned about anybody else about the safety on the road. And we feel this is the safest measure to get product to job sites.
Okay, that, that answers that question for me.
Go ahead.
Boat traffic, once provided everything is approved, how many barges in and out of that bay on average?
Oh, I wouldn't expect, just because of the nature of it and the time it takes to get somewhere, I wouldn't expect it to be more than one a day. Would you?
No.
And, and probably not even that frequently. Moving barges is not like moving in a pleasure craft. It's, it's a slow, slow churn.
Are there any other turnaround spots besides the BLM boat launch?
Yes, you could, you, you could go, I would expect that the next one, you know, Vlad said the Mineral Ridge Hiking Trail. I don't think that's a very good site, and so I wouldn't expect a driver to use that. The next op, good opportunity, I think, is probably at, right at the base of the Beauty Bay grade. There's a wide spot there. That's, that would likely be a location for that. Also, up at the top of the Beauty Bay grade, you know, right before you get to the, right as you get to the Flying Arrow Ranch, I would expect that may be another spot. But if they have to keep going until they find one, they have to keep going until they find one. You know, your worst-case scenario is you do a loop around Burma Road or up through Gauzer Road or something like that. Very rarely will that be the case because of the time when they use this facility. When they're coming in and out of there, they are not going to be at times when that boat launch is at peak usage because they, they don't want to have to deal with that traffic. They're in and out of there early morning. Boat launch, peak time for usage is going to be afternoons, weekends, and that sort of thing.
Okay, next question?
How, how many semi-loads do you expect per day?
At the peak, when we're loading a barge or something, typically, when we're loading that, we're bringing in, much like the thing describes, you know, two in peak hours, maybe four in a day. And in addition to that, we also have the Forest Service road at the back of Beauty Bay that has sufficient turn around.
Okay.
Any more?
Maybe later. That does it for now.
Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, Rand.
Thank you, Commissioners.
John, did you want to take your three minutes?
Sure.
Once again, John Condon, for the record, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
Am I speaking to you or to the...
No, you're speaking to us, but that's okay. Get the mic up as close as you can.
So thank you for, for seeing me here tonight and allowing us this opportunity to present our case. I know there's a, a lot of misinformation out there, and I hope that we can clear that up tonight. One thing I want to point out, and I want those in the audience to know, is that I fully respect, you know, their, their rights to oppose this. I get it. Nobody wants anything in their backyard, but I've asked numerous people of the opposition side, if not here, where. And I have yet to have any credible options. I've been out this, for approximately eight to 10 years now to find a suitable site. Because, at no fault of our own, we're displaced through development. You know, we've operated on these very waterways for 101 years. And we've done so and provided services and jobs and commerce for this county. We, we support many, many state agencies, county agencies. We, we are the only people capable of dealing with issues at the dam. So we, we're a necessity to the area. Now, that being said, I don't think that's anybody that can argue that point, that we are a necessary service to this county. And if they have a better place for us, I'd love to hear about it. Because I have been to every agency. I have been to every other option. And after eight years of looking hard at this situation, this is the best possible location for us. We, and we didn't just buy the first piece that came up. We, I hired Rand Wickman three months before we made the purchase. We went through all the due diligence. He met with all the agencies. And at that time, we got positive responses from everybody. It hasn't been until this process that we're, we're engaged in this. I think, you know, and I'm, I'm more than willing to listen and to answer questions. There's, I really appreciate, there was actually two parties that actually reached out to me directly to get further information on what our plans were, instead of just relying upon the other information that was out there. And those people were originally opposed. And since, after I explained things to them, they are now in favor of this application. We're not trying to hide anything. All we're really trying to do is just relocate an operation that's been on the lake for 90-plus years. And you can see from our existing facilities on the river, it's probably a lot of people don't even know where they are because we just are not an impact. And we have operated there for over 90 years without incident. We too realize that there, you know, with every endeavor...
Thirty seconds, John.
There is certain, certain issues that arise. But I can tell you, you know, I have been on this site. We have driven back and forth. I've had big trucks in and out of there. And that every person that's here tonight drove here. And they took as big a risk doing so as what we're proposing to do here. Thank you.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. Your winter storage, what do you foresee as being stored there over the winter?
You know, we will, we will not make use of this facility in the winter to any great degree because of the water level precludes us from doing so. And those might ask, well, why are you doing it then? Well, actually, in fact, it actually extends our work window by two months because it was the same situation we had on the river. We couldn't work on the river year-round either. We just work around that. And so we would have minimal stuff at that site. We will have a bulkhead. It'll be much like the pictures you saw of our former facility. We're duplicating the same facility. The only difference is that we would also, you know, we would have a dock there to moor some workboats. So that's the only difference. That we currently moor at Blackwell. So we, we're just merely transferring those same encroachments to a different part of the lake. And I, I still would challenge anybody to find a better place for this than this site.
Do you have another question?
Would those boats remain in the winter, or would they be taken out?
There would be, we still keep some boats in the water because we are on call for the Sheriff's Department, for, you know, the public facilities. We still work, we do a fair amount of work in the winter because we do work at the marinas when the boats are gone. We do work, our corb engineers work and, and all the shoreline rehabilitation stuff we do in the winter when the water's down. So we do still operate in the winter.
Okay, but because of the water levels, would you moor there, or would you be mooring somewhere else?
No, see, the beauty of that is that we can transfer our moorage over to Blackwell. Because, and that's what we do, because now all the boats are gone, and we go and we moor at the Blackwell Marina there in the wintertime because of water down.
It's more convenient.
So months and days of operations, then, just for this location here?
Okay, so, we don't work weekends. You know, we, just like, because of the very same reasons that we're brought up here, we don't like conflicting with the general public either. So we very rarely work on weekends unless we're called out for emergency services. Months would be, let's say, you know, when they bring the water up at this site, June to October.
Okay. Bill, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, is it Arms?
Arms, yes.
Okay, sir, you have three minutes. Go right ahead.
David Arms.
And you are in favor, you are in support of the applicant. Go right ahead.
So David Arms, consulting wildlife biologist. I completed a wildlife analysis for this property specific to coconie and bald eagles. So as you heard before, property is not located in any coconie spawning habitat. It's a mud flat, and coconie require shoreline gravels for spawning. And due to the timing of the use of the property, they will not be interfering with any spawning activities. Coconie spawn, their, their peak spawning time is mid-November and when the lake is drawn down, so. It will not have any impacts on the spawning. Regarding bald eagles, bald eagles utilize Wolf Lodge Bay for winter feeding opportunities. That time corresponds with the coconie spawning time. Their peak time, their peak usage is December, and they taper down in January. They disperse off to migratory and nesting habitats. There's no known bald eagle nests. to migratory and nesting habitats. There's no known bald eagle nests within the vicinity of the property. So, as you can see, the timing of the eagles and the coconie not correspond with any use on the property. So, any questions?
That's it. Questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. So, what I'm going to do now is-
Still getting through the applicant.
Oh, okay.
He's speaking to what Rand had in his presentation.
This gentleman is, okay, Scott MacArthur. Yes, sir, come right up. Take your three minutes. Also in favor and supportive of the applicant.
Scott MacArthur, H2 Surveying and Engineering, Haiden, Idaho. What do you do when you have a project that's heavily opposed? You go hire more engineers. I'm a project engineer. We hired a third-party unbiased experienced traffic engineer to analyze the ITD-approved approach. We have been working with ITD since this conception. We asked this third-party unbiased engineer to analyze this site. He prepared a memo and I'll gladly give you that memo. It's not stamped yet, but it's prepared. He analyzed it using the conditions that were used to approve the approach from ITD. We were just looking for what level of safety do we have? And his conclusions basically were, you know, the two trips per day, he had more in his memo. He's like, you know, no improvements are required. He watched the videos in the memo. He provides photos. Side distance adequate. And then I contacted ITD and I said, what are your traffic volumes? What are your proposed traffic volumes for US 97, or for Highway 97, excuse me, the state highway? And they said, hey, we'll give you those too. So, the traffic engineer used that information to analyze this use on this unique piece of property and determined that what we're trying to do is the best use for this piece of property. That approach is constructed within substantial accordance of ITD's requirements. ITD went out and they measured the site, actually commended us in writing, saying, we don't have people that construct their approach how they tell us they're going to construct it. We actually commend that. I guess one of the biggest things is this project's site is not going to be used for customers. You're not going to have, you know, Betty pulling into the project site and trying to maneuver through the site. You're having employees that are going to pull into the project site, they're going to use the site like they use every day, and they're going to leave the site when they're ready to leave the site. You're not going to have random people pulling into this project site. If they are, they're trespassing. So, this zoning that we're asking for is required for this use to make it a legitimate use and we have complied with every condition thus far. You'll hear tonight that the approach isn't built correctly. It's not a built to standards. It has nothing to do with the scenic byway. It has to do with IDAPA codes, the MUTCD, Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, signage is in place. Everything we needed to do for ITD to make this approach suitable for this use is approved and it's been verified in this memo by the third party.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have any questions? How many county employees?
Six to eight, six to eight.
Six to eight employees, okay. Any other questions?
They'll all come in, usually one, if not two trucks. It's not going to be six people coming to the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have Gail Condon, who is also in favor of the applicant and does not wish to speak. Okay? So, what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to go through some of those who have indicated a position but do not wish to speak and then we'll move on to the group presentations. I apologize for the sloppiness of the mic and the poor reception, or the poor transmission, rather, but it is what it is. Okay, so I'm going to run through these as quickly as I can. Geraldine A. Brown, opposed, does not wish to speak. Richard Solley, opposed, does not wish to speak. Sandy Solley, opposed, does not wish to speak. Mary Miles, opposed, does not wish to speak. Ronnie G. Mills, oh, it's Mills, excuse me, opposed, does not wish to speak. And there is a comment here. I'll read it. It says, "Seriously, is there a worse place on Highway 97 between Highway 90 and Harrison for turning truck traffic?" Rayanne Messiah, opposed, does not wish to speak. Alan Lament, opposed, does not wish to speak. Donald Hubbard, does not wish to speak, also opposed. Robert Zapka, opposed, does not wish to speak. John Brown, opposed, does not wish to speak. Patty Kemner, opposed, does not wish to speak. RNN Myback, opposed, does not wish to speak. George Kemner, opposed, does not wish to speak. Vaughn and Beth Peregreeni, is it? Or Paragamian, opposed, did not indicate whether or not they wish to speak. Okay, so what I'm going to do at this point, if I called your name and you do not wish to speak-
Do you want to do in favor?
Yeah.
Does not wish to-
What I'll do is I'll ask you if you wouldn't mind stepping outside just to make room for others.
These are all also opposed.
Just briefly, I'm Vaughn Paragamian and my wife and I have a-
Do you want to speak? Or you want to make a submission?
Yes.
By all means. Kathy will take it. Thank you, sir.
V1002.
Okay, so moving on, these folks are in favor and do not wish to speak. Eric O'Brien, John Swallow, in favor, does not wish to speak. Jesse Hi, in favor, does not wish to speak. Jason, it looks like Carvaz, in favor, does not wish to speak. John Hegelmann, in favor, does not wish to speak. Sean Calvin, in favor, does not wish to speak. Michael Cliff, in favor, does not wish to speak. Anthony Zito, in favor, does not wish to speak. It looks like Bryce Kemp, in favor, does not wish to speak. Matt Bush, in favor, not wish to speak. Ian Arulano, right? In favor, does not wish to speak. Kimberly Shandy, in favor, does not wish to speak. Matthew Shandy, in favor, does not wish to speak. And I only have a first name here and it's Aaron Windsor Court, in favor, does not wish to speak. Jeff Cass, in favor, does not wish to speak. And James, it looks like Heilman, in favor, does not wish to speak. So, at this point, if I've called your name and there are folks standing outside, if you wouldn't mind giving up your seats and you can certainly participate, you know, from the lobby, we'd certainly appreciate it so the folks can have a chance to take a seat. What we'll do now is we'll move on to the group presentations. And when I call your name, first I'll call the speaker and then I'll call your name. When I do so, would you please rise? Wait until everyone has stood up and then at that point, you can sit down and listen or take a stand outside if you wouldn't mind. Okay, here we go. So, the first speaker is Amy Anderson. Amy will have 10 minutes. Amy is speaking in behalf of KEA, Cootney Environmental Alliance. And I will call the 10 names. When I call your name, again, please rise. Ted Davis? He's right here. Ecos Ador. Lori Ador. Linda Murphy. Cheryl Sorensen. Erin McClatchy. Doug Potter. Stephen Brooks. Polly Hamlin. David Weeks, or Weeks, forgive me. Kristy Millan? Can I see Kristy?
She's in the hall.
She's in the hall? Okay. Well, we're over the 10 anyway. And is it Betsy Winaris? Winis, okay. So, you're all here. Amy, the floor is yours. You have 10 minutes. You can sit, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to submit comments, signed comments, and we also circulated an online petition. We have 1,484 signees in one week, opposed.
V1003.
So, thank you again. Firstly, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for their work administering county government. It's a massive job not to be taken lightly. I'd also like to thank you and recognize you for working to educate yourselves by attending our JIM Symposium, attending Cootney Environmental Alliance Waterkeeper Tours and speaker events and other events on the critical land use and water quality issues that face our community in Lake Coeur d'Alene and for working collaboratively with the community members of Cootney County and giving thoughtful, considerate attention to the comments of the public here today. So, land use decisions made by the Board of County Commissioners regarding this shoreline property and all properties within Cootney County have a direct effect on the health, safety and general welfare of the people of Cootney County and Lake Coeur d'Alene. Please enter into the record the following comments and PowerPoint presentation on case number ZON 18-0016 as submitted by KEA. We urge you to take into consideration the following recommendations for the long-term health of our lake, of Lake Coeur d'Alene watershed to preserve the rural nature of the area, which is consistent with known Cootney County community values. KEA is opposed to the proposed zone change from restricted residential to commercial for a portion of the 107-acre parcel located in Wolf Lodge Bay on the northeastern shoreline of Lake Coeur d'Alene for the following reasons. The public hearing notice for case number ZON 18-0016 requests a zone change from restricted residential to commercial for a .5 acre portion of 107-acre parcel. However, the narrative provided to the county by the applicant requests a zone change for a 24 and a half acre portion of the property. A zone change for the proposed 24 and a half acre parcel, the majority of which is below the ordinary high water mark on Lake Coeur d'Alene, would have profoundly more physical and environmental impacts associated with onsite and in-lake activities. The public and county need to know the applicant's plans for the entire 24 and a half acres, including all in-lake activities. That is the potential for construction, size and location of piers, boats per day, types of vessel utilizing the site, crane storage, potential dredging necessary, dock storage, et cetera, in addition to the on-land proposed activities and operations on the .5 acre peninsula. The full scope of the project needs to be clearly explained and articulated to the public, the county, and accompanied by proposals for mitigation of the foreseeable physical and environmental aspects of the full scope of the proposed commercial operations before approval is considered. So, I apologize for the large amount of text on these slides. However, it was necessary for the submission of this PowerPoint onto the official record. And in the interest of time, the following is a list of bulleted points quoted directly from Cootney County Land Use and Development Code, Cootney County 2010 Comprehensive Plan and Idaho State Law, which reference instances in which the applicant has not fully and adequately addressed laws governing amendments to the official Cootney County zoning map. In order for a zone change to be approved and amendments made to the official Cootney County zoning map, there are 11 findings that the Board of County Commissioners must make in order to abide by Cootney County Land Use and Development Codes. These laws govern the powers and duties of our county commissioners, whose number-one job is to administer county government and to make decisions that ensure the health, safety and general well-being of the citizens of Cootney County. Oops, I could go in the wrong direction. So, 8.1.405, required findings for amendments to the official zoning map. Again, before a proposed zone change to the official zoning map can be approved, the board must make the following findings. One, the applicant has demonstrated sufficient justification for the proposed change based on the requirements of subsection 8.1.402A of this article, Cootney County Land Use and Development Codes, Article 1.4 Amendments, 8.1.402 Amendments to the Official Zoning Map. Number four, why the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety and general welfare. So, safety. Many safety concerns surround the proposed operations on Highway 97. Highway 97 is a narrow, two-lane, winding, national scenic byway, which hugs the edge of Lake Coeur d'Alene for 36 miles. It's been acknowledged by the applicant and mandated by the ITD permit that because of the site location on a blind curve off of Highway 97, that operational vehicles will not be able to turn left out of the site and will be required to only turn right into and out of the site unless the road is widened. This operation will most certainly increase vehicle traffic on Highway 97 with no proposal or account for Highway 97 infrastructure improvements, residential and tourism access and use or emergency vehicle access and use. According to an accident summary from ITD, from 1998 to 2018, for the roughly one and a half mile stretch of Highway 97 from Wolf Lodge Bay Road to Wolf Lodge Bay Boat Launch, there have been 29 accidents involving 41 individuals. A whopping 72% of these accidents involve motorist inability to safely negotiate the blind curve adjacent to the shoreline property in question. Traffic safety issues must be considered and rectified before approval of the zone change is considered. To touch on health and general welfare, Lake Coeur d'Alene hosts 75 million metric tons of heavy metals laden sediment at its base. According to a study by the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, lead concentrations in Wolf Lodge Bay reach as much as 50 to 1,000 parts per million. The potential for commercial operations, which could potentially include dredging so that barges and large vessels may access the site in the bay, to disturb those heavy metals laden sediments exists and is exacerbated due to the shallow nature of the bay. Proposals for mitigating these effects have not been provided by the applicant and have not been included in the CZDA as required by Cootney County Code 8.4.9054 and have the potential to greatly negatively impact the health and general welfare of community members. So, I'm going to kind of fly through these as fast as I can. They took us from 15 minutes to 10 minutes, so that's like 30% of the presentation. So, Cootney County Land Use and Development Codes, number five, the effect the proposed zone change will have on the property rights, values and character of neighboring properties. And number seven, why the proposed amendment would not be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Development in this location is extremely sparse and the area is one, oh, put on a, so as you can see from this, there's not a whole lot of commercial or any commercial activity in the area. So, development in this location is extremely sparse and the area is one of the last undeveloped bays on Coeur d'Alene Lake, with the next closest development to the west and Beauty Bay. Proposed operational activities are not consistent with the values and characters of neighboring properties and do not adhere to the county values put forth in the Cootney County Comprehensive Plan, which succinctly states the clear public sentiment that the county's beauty and culture not be compromised and that growth occurs in a responsible way that preserves the natural environment. The Comprehensive Plan considers and accounts for environmentally sensitive areas such as lakes, rivers, wetlands and wildlife corridors and seeks to reduce development pressures in these areas. All of these sensitive area characteristics are consistent with the lake, wetlands and wildlife corridors found in Wolf Lodge Bay. Currently, the property is zone restricted residential. The zoning in the area is mixed with commercial zoning on the north and east, as been pointed out by the planner of the proposed site, and restricted residential to the south and west. Further south, the zoning is rural and is consistent with zoning patterns around the majority of the lake. While the area to the east and north is zone commercial, the commercial activity taking place consists of low-impact recreational use campgrounds and ecotourism.
There you go.
Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry, guys. All right. So, Wolf Lodge Bay and Wolf Lodge Creek. So, back to the 11 required findings. Those first ones were referenced by the first initial required finding. So, the second required finding to proposed zone change is generally consistent with the land use designation in the Comprehensive Plan, which applies to this property. Because I don't have much time left, I will submit this PowerPoint, which goes through all 11 of those required findings, and I'll get right down to the closing part. So, in closing, I just want to emphasize that this is more than just about reciting Cootney County Codes to the Board of County Commissioners. Due to time constraints, I was barely able to scratch the surface with regard to continued loss of shoreline riparian habitat, riparian buffers, the potential effects to water quality, area ecosystems, fisheries and wildlife habitat, Wolf Lodge Bay Creek and the wetlands of Wolf Lodge Bay.
Stop. Sorry. Time's up.
Just a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
The statistics of accidents over that 20-year period, what time of year were they? The statistics of accidents over that 20-year period, what time of year were they?
It's a summary from the 20-year period, where I'm assuming every month.
So, failure to navigate could have had to do with road conditions in the winter?
Oh, I'm sure a lot of accidents are associated with road conditions. But that slide definitely points out that that's a very dangerous curve with very limited sightline for the proposed area that this operation is operating out of.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, and thank you for the consideration of the public's comments here today.
Okay. So, what I'm going to do is, once again, I'm going to run through the names of folks who do not wish to speak, and then we'll move on with the rest of the group presentations. Thank you. So, this one is neutral, that is to say, neither opposed or in favor, and that would be Elaine Price does not wish to speak. Janet Rhodes, opposed, does not wish to speak. Cindy Asklin, opposed, does not wish to speak. Darrell Santala, opposed, does not wish to speak. Fred Henkel, opposed, does not wish to speak. Verna Henkel, opposed, does not wish to speak. Christine Owens, opposed, does not wish to speak. Donna Stambo, opposed, no indication. Elaine Fortifer, it looks like, opposed, does not wish to speak. Joffrey Lampard, opposed, does not wish to speak. Pat Mohuder, it looks like, opposed, no indication. Eric Mosher, opposed, does not wish to speak. Mary Foster, opposed, does not wish to speak. Jerry Burmice, opposed, does not wish to speak. Terry McCray, opposed, does not wish to speak. Scott McCray, opposed, does not wish to speak. Jeff Brown, opposed, does not wish to speak. Matt Little, opposed, does not wish to speak. Pam Davies, opposed, does not wish to speak. Carlotta Spear, opposed, does not wish to speak. Michael Fitzgerald, opposed, does not wish to speak. Laura Danielle, opposed, does not wish to speak. Phil Brokowski, opposed, does not wish to speak. Ken Shesei. Shosei, okay, opposed, does not wish to speak. Hildegard Poel, opposed, does not wish to speak. Jeff Grange, opposed, does not wish to speak. And Renee Bordelon, opposed, does not wish to speak. So, once again, if you're part of that group, if you wouldn't mind exchanging places with folks who've been standing outside, we'd certainly appreciate it. So, we'll move on with our groups. And the next one would be, the group representative is Stanley Harrison. Mr. Harrison? Are you here? What the form doesn't indicate is if you're for or opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. I kind of figured, but... Okay, so I'm going to call the names. Please rise. Okay. Kristy Harrison. Addison Harrison. Alyssa Harrison. This is a family affair. Okay. Gina Brooks. Thank you. Betsy Bulliard. Is it Vanny Lamont? Thank you. Lori Lamont. Michael Bulliard. Michael Mailer. Okay. Carleen Kada. And John Lee. Okay, that makes 11. You may be seated. Thank you.
Is everyone ready? Ready to start? Haven't already started, have you?
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, name and address.
I'm Stanley Harrison, 11134 East Wolf Lodge Bay Road. I've been there 52 years. Our family's been there 52 years. I'm a fifth-generation North Idahoan. My living room and my dining room look directly down on the site, so it definitely affects me. What really makes me the most nervous about this is this dangerous blind corner we've been talking about, so that's what I'm going to focus on tonight.
Yeah, put it up. Hold it up.
How do I use this? Here we go. So, what we need to look at encroachment considerations. First off, is there adequate site distance? I'm going to show there isn't. Is there room to turn out safely? No. Is there a practical location to turn around? No. Is the accident, a high accident area or low? It's not a low accident area. Oh, we'll get back. There we go. Is the topography forgiving? Nope. It's a steep hillside right there. It's icy. There's fog in there. When you exit out, you're directly into the sunset. Has there a thorough engineering review been done? Nope. Is it built to plans? Nope. And is there a history of regulatory compliance? Unfortunately, no. And is this the best option for the location? All right. I'll be using the roadway design manual from the ITD and the national standard. They call it the Green Book. First off, the Green Book, which is the national standard, has site distance listed. 45 miles an hour, the site distance is 380 feet. That's for an intersection, which is appropriate to this location, as I'll be showing. I'm going really fast. Sorry, guys.
It's okay.
The drivers coming from the west going eastbound, I've done it numerous times. I've set my speedometer at 45 miles an hour. You have 2.3 seconds, which is 160 feet of site distance. Now, why do you ask? Should I be concerned about that? It's in the other lane. As I show later, there's a high probability that the vehicles will exit that area and enter that lane. So, that is an effect. You have to include site distance in that direction. And not to mention, that's such a tight blind corner that even if a truck comes out and it pulls out and doesn't cross the center line, there's still a strong chance that someone will get spooked by that, plus people go around there wide. There's a reason this has the highest accident density of any place on the whole highway. Okay, coming the other way, you also don't have 360 feet of site distance. You have about 220, which is about 3.3 seconds reaction time. Also, all these numbers, go into Google Street View, see for yourself. Go out there, set your speedometer at 45 miles an hour, and see what you have. This isn't the only area on the lake that there's an issue, and you guys have had to deal with it before, Echo Bay. Echo Bay, Rand Mickman said, looking to the south, the site distance is a little over 600 feet, and north it's over 1,100. In the permit, the traffic impact analysis, which they have had to done, which these guys haven't, which this developer has not done, it isn't even listed. Down at the bottom, these folks probably can't see it, but down at the bottom, the site distance just says nothing. They didn't even consider it. The Idaho Transportation Department didn't even consider it. And that's like one of the major things. Why would they do that? I was really appreciated your guys' comments, because I went to that hearing, the Lake Love Estates hearing, appreciated your concerns about Highway 97. In 2005, there were safety issues found. In the report, nothing's been done to those safety issues. Nothing's been remedied. This location is far, far worse, far, far worse than the Echo Bay location. Yet, I really appreciate the fact that you're taking into consideration the folks that live on Highway 97 and the infrastructure that's there. There's no room to turn out. So, what I've done is I've done a scale model, because the highway has a 65-foot length limit, allows 65-foot-long trucks at 45 mile an hour through there. So, I have a scale model. I'll leave it with you guys. And it's a 3D model, and you guys can see for yourself whether you think it can be done safely, okay? Because I'm a firm believer in you guys deciding for yourself, not just what someone else says. I made the model per the Idaho Transportation Department's manual. I 3D-printed it to scale. You can measure it. One inch is 4.87 feet. I was not able to get it, and none of my family was. I had two professional drivers try to do it. These drivers could not get it to go around there, okay? You can read their comments. None of these guys could get there. These guys have been driving for a long time. So, I went to the Green Book, because that's the standard. The Green Book has very detailed drawings about what the actual requirements are for a 45-and-a-half-foot truck, you see it here, and for a 55-foot truck here. So, what I've done for you is, I'll let you guys decide. I'm going to leave this with you as evidence. I have taken transparencies straight from the Green Book. I've done them to scale. You can put them on there, and you can see if it'll pass. Now, I understand that Mr. Condon is probably a really great driver. Oh, by the way, real quick, I actually, because they cheated when they made the driveway right there, they made it wider than it was supposed to be, which I'll go into later, I've actually included that in my deal, so you'll see, because he'll come in and say, "Well, it's actually wider than that," than what the original drawing said. What you need to keep in mind, this is not just for Mr. Condon's business. This is a permanent change, a permanent rezoning. You have to design for all trucks by law on Highway 97 that are expected uses or future uses, not just his truck. So, they allow 65-foot trucks. So, you need to design what the feds say is the standard truck, because those rules are written in blood. I work in the aerospace industry, and I work with the FAA all the time, and those rules, the federal aviation regulations, are written in blood. They're based on what's happened in the past, when there's accidents, when there's things, and they don't just do those haphazardly. So, use your judgment, because a 65-foot truck, even a standard 45-and-a-half-foot truck cannot operate out of there. There's just not enough room, and you guys can see it for yourself. John even said, in the last hearing, John said he wouldn't even bring loaded trucks out of there. Even the hearing examiner asked him that. He said, "No, I won't bring loaded trucks out of there." He's already brought it up. There's a picture of him. We saw him do it. In fact, he had the video, so... All right. There's no place to turn around. This is the kicker. First off, the plan is to turn around to BLM Boat Launch or the Mineral Ridge parking area. It's not happening, folks. I've been in contact with Mr. Pavlat. He is the... Kurt Pavlat, or Perflat. Sorry. Kurt Pavlat.
BLM.
He's the BLM field manager. He runs the BLM. I spoke to him twice on the phone. He said absolutely no way. I have an email from him, where he says he is not going to turn around there or in there. There's no way to turn around right there. So, no Mineral Ridge parking, no BLM. I talked to every single landowner along that whole area in the Beauty Bay. The Beauty Bay, the gal that owns the commercial land right there, as well as everybody along that highway, or, I'm sorry, along that road, the Forest Service road, also spoke to the Forest Service. Forest Service says there's no way he's turning around in the Beauty Bay campground. There's no way he can turn around in the Forest Service road without a special use permit. So, there's no place for him to turn around down there. I've talked to every single person, and no one wants him to turn around there, rightfully so. So, you'd have to go up the hill and go all the way. There's a piece of land that's zoned industrial that you could potentially turn around. But that is actually a nine-minute, like 5.2 miles, I think it is, each way. Do we really, really think he's going to do that, guys? Come on. Is he really going to do that, or is he going to make a left turn out like he did on Saturday, which was reported anyway? There was a complaint that's already been filed by the ITD. You're already violating that right turn out. You work a long, hard day. You're not going to turn out to the right. You're just going to turn out left. You're going to cheat it. Who's going to enforce that? Who's really going to enforce that? Let's use common sense. All right. It's the highest accident area of the entire highway. The average accidents over the last 20 years from the ITD data, which I will provide, I've actually provided here for you, is 14.2 accidents per mile. The 11-accident rolling average on that area is 523.8. If you look at the steepness of the curve, this is basically accidents versus miles. If you look at the steepness of the curve, that shows you the accident density, how many accidents are there. That thing basically goes vertical for nine accidents. That's why you have to use an 11-accident rolling average, because if you go nine, it's infinite. It's a slope. So, that is the worst spot. Millions have the most accidents in one spot. It has the highest rolling average accident of any place on the highway. And in summer or winter, that's an average between everything, right? Do we really want... By the way, most of them are negotiating the curve. That's the problem. Do we really think that this change is going to increase or it's going to decrease accidents in this location, really? And if we find that it's going to increase, we think it is, then it doesn't mean A4, A5, A10, and A11 of 8.1.405, which are required findings to do this rezoning. I'm sorry. All right. There's the inadequate engineering review. When they first started this whole project, the ITD said, "You have an encroachment permit that it's unlikely due to safety impacts." I spoke with Rob Beecher of the ITD shortly afterwards, before the last meeting hearing, and he said, he wasn't in favor of it. His foreman wasn't in favor of it, and he wouldn't have approved it, but there was a two-hour meeting that he wasn't part of. They came out, and they had a permit. Go figure. That permit, you can see part of it here. They did not require a traffic impact study. The site distance wasn't recorded. It's very sloppy. There's handwritten stuff. We don't know who put it in there. And it says the existing gravel access is 30 feet, which is wrong. It was not 30 feet. If you look at the narrative, it says the existing gravel approach is approximately 30 feet wide. Per the survey that was done by the ITD in the 90s, it's six meters, which is 19.7 feet, not 30 feet. They based the entire permit on a falsity from the very start. Okay. Plus, he's not in compliance with the permit. I'm going to have to go up here. My eyes are a little bit bad. Sorry. 57.3 feet, or it's supposed to be 30 feet wide. It's 34 feet wide. It's supposed to be 35.4 feet wide between...
You might want to stand off to the side so folks can...
It's supposed to be 35.4 feet wide. It's actually 54 feet wide. It's supposed to be 57.3 wide. It's actually 72 feet wide.
You're down to 30 seconds.
Down to 30 seconds? Man, this is going fast. All right. So, why does Mr. Condon and his business get so many passes from the Idaho agencies? Their partner lands, is letting them operate a dock storage business for years illegally. The fishing game has said that that is a Coconie spawning bed. I was just out there. We've got pictures. You'll see them later. It's full of dead Coconie. It's the exact same topography as right down where my son has caught Coconie, the spawning Coconie, and the ITD has issued this incorrectly.
Okay, so you need to stop. Sorry.
I was trying to go fast.
You're going to sleep well tonight.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Hold your applause, please. Okay. So, let's move on to the next group. Okay, and the group representative is Mr. Isaiah Harrison. Sir, would you stand up, please? There you are. Okay. So, when I call your name, if you're among the, I guess it's 11 here, please rise. Okay, so we have Isaac Harrison. Is Isaac here?
He's in the back.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Elijah. Harrison, okay. Jason Whitehead. Did I miss him?
No.
There he is. Okay. Bill Braid. Barbara Jean Durell. Regina Gail Mailer. Michelle Williams. Richard Williams. Deborah Stone. It looks like, is it Mr. or Ms. Lee? Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't read your first name. And Myra Sharman. Okay. Floor is yours. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Appreciate it. Your address, please? It's Isaiah Harrison. Go ahead.
Isaiah Harris. I can't tell if this is on. I'm trying to recall. P O Box 2455. Depends.
Coeur d'Alene?
Yeah, Coeur d'Alene. So, it'd be the same as my father's, if you can use that. All right. So, good evening, commissioners. I should probably start by introducing myself. My name is Isaiah Harrison, and I have lived my whole life in North Idaho. I would say my case is a little special, seeing as I was literally born under a window overlooking the site. As I grew up, this bay was my education. I've fished here since I could walk, caught my dinner on it many a time. I've snorkelled this bay and sat above three-and-a-half-foot pike directly off the proposed development site. I've boated on this end of the lake as well. From surfing to skiing to inner tubing with my siblings, I've done most all of it. These are things that I would encourage you to do on a warm summer's day. There is one thing I have done that I would say most other people haven't, and that is rowing. A brief summary of my experience in rowing. Since I was 12, I have set 32 world records in different age groups in indoor rowing. This past year, I competed in and won the U.S. National Championship as a 16-year-old rowing on the water. After that, in the fall, I took second for my age in the largest international regatta in the world called Head of the Charles in Boston. To finish this year's season off, I broke a record that stood for 40 years and won the race in the largest regatta in the West, the Head of the Lake in Seattle. I don't say any of this to brag by any means, merely to show you how intimately connected I am to this bay. Especially during the summer months, I am on this bay five to six days a week, every week. With this in mind, as far as my knowledge go, I spend more time on this bay than anyone else, overlooking it every day and rowing on it every morning. So, why am I telling you all this? Well, for three basic reasons. First off, due to the amount of time I've spent on the bay in this area and with the unique nature of rowing, I also have a unique perspective on the bay. I'm right on the water all the time, seeing every kind of activity that goes on there. Secondly, I have an incredible amount of firsthand experience for how Wolf Lodge Bay is used. I can't tell you how many times I've come across fishermen in the early morning, enjoying the peaceful aspect of the bay. I myself have felt this disturbed just earlier this year whenever Mr. Condon was transporting, was transporting, using his barges. This bay is an incredibly common use throughout the year, along with boaters in the summer. This just goes to show how this area is used, but I do use it a little bit more specifically, which brings us to my third reason. My personal goal is an Olympic gold medal. The U.S. hasn't won an Olympic gold in the men's singles skull since this gentleman, Grace Kelly's father, in fact, in 1920. From what I've been told by numerous coaches, I have a strong chance of becoming an Olympian. All this to say, I don't want to have to explain to press and future training partners why my training grounds looks like an industrial zone. And this introduces us to the first major concern for the lake. Coeur d'Alene relies incredibly heavily on the tourism industry. During the summer months, people come from near and far to use our waters for recreational boating. They relax, catch a few fish, maybe hike Mineral Ridge. Even Mr. Harris, the gentleman who owns the Navy and Campground and is in favor of the development, agrees to this. If you go to Camp CDA's website under Views, you will see that every picture is a scenic shot of Wolf Lodge Bay. He even said this in a text to my father. He even said this in a text to my father. You're substantially undervaluing that land up there as it relates to what we can do with it and provide these experiences folks are craving these days, treehouses, glamping, et cetera. Now with three-and-a-half seasons of insight, those views and experiences are valuable. Tourists come to this end of the lake for the views, the unique pristine environment that it's famous for. They come for the camping, boating, or maybe just to drive Scenic Highway 97. Not only that, but you have the Mineral Ridge Trail system. The Mineral Ridge Trail, the first BLM trail in Idaho, directly overlooks the proposed building site. Wolf Lodge Bay defines Cortalane Lake. Don't believe me? It's even on the cover of our phone books. Now, seeing as I'm 16, I've never used one of these before. But I can even turn to page 20 and find where it specifically points out Wolf Lodge Bay as a point of interest for our, for our, for our town. But this time of year, everyone is coming out to see the eagles. This is a screenshot taken from the Eagle Tours promo video, and I find it ironic how they advertise to see nature at its finest, and the proposed development is directly in the background. Not only that, but on Crew CDA website, it says this. "In December and January, these birds congregate from Lake's northern end to feed on lake-bound salmon. For an up-close and personal look, take one of Lake Cortalane's cruise boats to Wolf Lodge Bay. It's an awe-inspiring sight to see these magnificent birds in the wild from the comfort of a cruise boat." Can we make it any more clear what the value of Wolf Lodge Bay is? Actually, yes, we can. Spokesman Review and the BLM both agree and say the exact same thing, that the pristine place to view these eagles and the pristine tourism environment for this time of year is Wolf Lodge Bay. Everyone agrees that this area directly in front of the proposed development site is the prime spot for tourism this time of year, and that is reflected in the numbers. Based on our calculations and the information gleaned so far, the Cortalane cruise boats, according to the Haggenon Corporation, do 50 Eagle Tours a year. They do, they do these on the weekends leading up to Christmas, and they do boat runs all week from December 26th to January 1st. Now, each boat is capable of carrying up to 120 people, which for the three boats adds up to 360 people. To make the long story short, every year you have up to 18,000 people who take the Eagle Tours, which at an average price of $23 a ticket adds up to $414,000 just focused on this one area. And that is only the ticket price. That doesn't include the estimations for food costs or the lodging or any other revenue that these tours alone bring into the city. And that is only the crews. The KEA was out at Mineral Ridge Boat Launch handing out flyers and getting signatures to their petitions, and in eight hours over two days, they were, they were able to collect 400 signatures. Assuming they made contact with half the people who came out to see the eagles, that is 800 signatures in two days. Take that and apply it to one month of prime eagle viewing, and you have 24,000 pedestrians coming out to view the eagles. And Wolf Lodge Bay is the center of it all. So why would you take a literal investment and deface it by allowing industrialization? Not only will development have an effect on tourism, it will drastically affect the wildlife as well. We really have two concerns for the environmental use of the area, the primary of which is the Coconie spawning grounds. These are all pictures taken just in the past few weeks, right along the beach in front of the proposed development. Chip Corsi, the regional manager for the Fish and Games, said, "The peninsula protrudes in the shallow portion of Wolf Lodge Bay where the bottom substrates are pri, are primarily fine sediment." He later said, he later in the email called the area a quote, "mud flat." In a later email, he said this. "The peninsula's submerged private lands are in the shallow portion of the bay and thus are not within the area that Coconie spawn. I am sorry, but Chip Corsi was wrong." This is clearly a spawning area for Coconie. The pictures show, and I can personally attest, that the underwater topography is the exact same as further down the beach. I personally have caught spawning, spawning Coconie in this area. Not only that, but the mere fact that there are so many fish right along the beach goes to show that this is a prime and pristine Coconie spawning area, right in front of the proposed development. The second of our concerns is the position of the development in relation to Wolf Lodge Creek. Chip Corsi in the same email said this, quote, "It would be hoped that any development proposed with a zone change would be capable of protecting existing water quality in Wolf Lodge Bay." It later said, quote, "Pike in particular are concerned because they prey heavily on native west slope cutthroat trout, including immigrants from and to Wolf Lodge Creek." We wholeheartedly agree with Chip Corsi in both of these statements. The headwaters to Wolf Lodge Creek empty directly in front of the developer's proposed area, meaning cold, clear water quality can be drastically affected, in turn affecting the native cutthroat trout population. With the water low at this time of year, you can clearly see it. Wolf Lodge Creek, which feeds directly into the lake adjacent to the developer's site. With this in mind, there are a few things that Mr. Condon needs to do, since he in essence would be altering a stream bed. According to the Idaho Department of Water Resources, quote, "The Idaho Stream Channel Protection Act requires that the stream channels of the state and their environment be protected against alteration for the protection of fish and wildlife habitat, aquatic life, recreation, aesthetic beauty, and water, water quality." This means that IDWR must approve in advance any work being done within the beds and banks of a continuously flowing stream. As far as our knowledge goes, Mr. Condon has not received this permit, and since his operation would be conducted over what is officially defined a stream, he must have it. Not only that, but based on experts we have spoken to, there are a number of other permits he may need as well, such as a nationwide permit 13 for bank stabilization, or a permit displaying these tested for bull trout, both things we haven't seen evidence for. Now that we've seen what the major concerns are, let's look at what Mr. Condon has done and what he needs to do. In the previous hearing, Mr. Condon told the examiner that he would not leave a site with a truck loaded with logs. Well, a few months ago, while in the car with my mother, I took pictures and video of a logging truck that the developer pulled.
You're down to 30 seconds, go ahead.
Pulled into the site, turned around, and then immediately exited.
Was that the end? Sorry, you're done. I apologize, but I have to host. I'll be sorry, folks, hold your camera. Can I flip to the last five? We have to stop here. I have to enforce it strictly or we're never going, we're never going to conclude this hearing, so, thank you.
I do have a question for you.
Go right ahead.
Where do you launch your boat boat?
Yeah, for sure. We actually have a small dock down below our house in Wolf Lodge Creek.
Any other questions? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to proceed with two more group presentations, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll conclude those and go on with the three-minute for folks who are in favor of the applicant. My guess is we're not going to wrap this up tonight, so that's something you might want to bear in mind if you need to get home. I want to give everybody a chance to speak, and if that means we need to continue the hearing to a later date, that's probably what we're going to do, but that'll be up to us as a board. So thank you, I appreciate it, sorry about that, but we need to proceed strictly. Okay, so the next is Janet Torline? So I presume you're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to call the 10 people. Greg Torline? Wayne Frye? Susan Melka? There you are. Okay, Della, is it Manu? There, okay, thank you. Who's this, Prior Melken? Ryan. Gosh, folks. Okay, I'm not going to read the last name. Where's Hans? Is he here? Okay. Barbara Dennis? Do we have a Gilbert? There we go. Joe Moncrief? Thank you. Janet Funk? Thank you. And Jody Beasy? You signed it instead of spelling it out. If I didn't know you, I wouldn't be able to read, okay. That's 11 people, you may be seated. Thank you, Janet. Floor is yours.
My name is Janet Torline, 1802, East Litten Lane, Harrison, Idaho. I serve on the Board of Directors for Cootney Environmental Alliance. On behalf of KEA, I submit for the public record and strongly encourage you to read, the board to read this before making decisions, the legal analysis prepared by our attorneys on why this zone change should be denied.
Exhibit number?
That will be B-1009.
Okay.
First of all, I, I'm going to give a few reasons supported by case law, which I won't cite, for denying this request. And I'd also like to add into the record, I believe there's been violation of due process in this hearing procedure. Number one, improper public notice. The public notice for Wolf Lodge Bay rezone incorrectly states the zone will be one-half acre. In reality, the developer is requesting a rezone of 24.5 acres. The county needs to provide an accurate summary of the true nature of the project. Decisions taken in violation of the public notice are void. Number two, compliance with rezone criteria. KCC 8.1.402 addresses, among other things, Amy didn't get through the 11 criteria. Public health, safety, and general welfare, including that the applicant must show its proposal will provide adequate protection of the environment for nearby residents, including preservation of natural areas. The applicant, applicant fails to meet that criteria. Affecting neighboring properties. In particular, I'll speak to character of neighboring properties. The developer has incorrectly correlated zoning with uses. Idaho courts have explained the correct standard for examining character is uses, not zoning. Zoning is incorrect standard of analysis for examining character. Otherwise, a property owner in an industrial zone manufacturing bump tacks could thereby produce automobiles solely on the basis that both are industrial uses. Compliance with the comprehensive plan. The developer does not address the primary shoreline future land use map designation and the project's potential adverse impacts related to shoreline regulations. The shoreline designation in part, is in part to enhance natural shorelines and retain view sheds. This project would do just the opposite. Economic development land use goals. Goal eight, as cited by the developer, ignores the qualification that requires compatibility with rural uses. In fact, no economic goals override the protections of shoreline designation. Per Cootney County Code 8.1, 8.1.405, to approve amendments to the official zoning map, the county would have to make certain required findings. Excuse me, these are the 11 findings that Amy started in on. There is no basis whatsoever in the record to support making these findings, and there is, on contrary, evidence in the record that demonstrates these findings cannot be made. The proposal is an illegal spot zone. Under Idaho law for type 1 spot zone, the test for whether a rezoning is valid is whether the zone change is in accord with the comprehensive plan. It is not. In fact, in 1986, Blazer versus County, Cootney County Board of Commissioners, the Board of the County Commissioners prevailed in, in upholding this law. I would hope the current Board of County Commissioners would do the same. Type 2 spot zone, this project proposes a use that is inconsistent with any other uses, that is inconsistent with any other uses in its surroundings for the benefit of the developer. Therefore, this project and related, related zone change request is also illegal type of spot zoning. Under the states and counties zoning rules, which the Board of County Commissioners is sworn to uphold, this project cannot be approved in its current form and its current location. The development is incompatible with surrounding uses and the comprehensive plan. It is also an illegal spot zone. For these reasons, the developer's application should be denied. Respectfully submitted for Cootney Environmental Alliance, Janet Torline.
Questions for Janet? Thank you. Okay, so next up, Jackie McNamara. Jackie, come forward, please. Okay, so this is another group presentation. After this presentation, we'll take a 10-minute break and then resume.
Jackie McNamara, 5223. Oh, did you want to?
No, I need to call the names. Okay, so first name, Richard Anderson, please, please stand up. Well, I'm going to move on, I'll come back. Charlene Beach? David, is it Red? Thank you. Echo Sador? Thank you. Kathy, is it McCoffin? McCon, sorry. Eileen Little? Okay. David Dieters? Okay. Ruben Miranda? Ruben, where are you?
Back there.
Oh, okay. Addison Little? Allison Little, forgive me. No, Addison, I had it right. And Tom Little? Okay, is, did we get Richard Anderson? Okay, here you are. Okay, you can sit down. Jackie, it's yours, 10 minutes.
Thank you. Jackie McNamara, 5223, South Catamaran, Harrison, Idaho. North Idaho Maritime has had many violations that caused the Cootney Planning and Zoning and IDL to issue stop-work orders. The reason I mention this is because we have to trust that the person running the business will abide by regulation. As recorded as far back as 2005, North Idaho Maritime hit a bank at Blackwell Island removing dirt within the 25-foot buffer zone and was issued violations by both Idaho Department of Lands and Cootney County Planning. His fleet manager's response to this was, "Everyday occurrences on Cortalane waterfront causes the government agencies to file violations." This dirt had to be cleaned up shovel full by shovel full because it was contaminated and you couldn't, you could not remove dirt from the 25-foot buffer zone. Since 2009, North Idaho Maritime has been operating out of Cougar Bay but without an IDL permit. That violation continues. In 2017, North Idaho Maritime was issued another stop-work order at Carlin Bay for installing a piers and then constructing an event dock without a permit from IDL. Reputable business practice would require such permits before construction. In 2017, North Idaho Maritime constructed a rural residential dock at Hayden Lake for a resident and 30 days later transferred the title to his trust and began commercial operations. An opposition group of neighbors was formed, and this is what they said. "The improvements were built under a residential dock permit which was issued by Idaho Department of Lands to the prior owner of Lot 140 approximately 30 days before the property was purchased by Condon's. During the summer of 2018, North Idaho Maritime conducted operations at that location in open violation of the uses granted by the residential permit." They were running a commercial operation. And this is an area in which, which was zoned private residential use, just as this area was, is zoned restricted residential, and it had a long tradition of public recreational use and activities, swimming, fishing, and there was a dock adjacent to it. The property owners got together and after numerous complaints to IDL, which were not acted upon, they finally got a hearing from IDL, at which time they presented photos, which I will put in the record, of small excavator backhoes on the shoreline of Hayden Lake without proper care being taken to protect the lake or the shore from spills or exhaust or anything that was being used by the machinery. The, what is rather interesting about this case is that a residential dock only requires a 25-foot permit, I mean, a 10-foot setback, whereas a commercial dock, which this is and has turned into, requires a 25-foot setback. Well, he, I, North Idaho Marine was able to get a permit, but then the city of Dalton had to grant a variance to that 25-foot setback. So this idea of being, going around the regulations to get the commercial activity that this business wants does not seem reputable or trustworthy. that this business wants does not seem reputable or trustworthy. This case, the owner, again, bought a rural restricted zoning piece of property and now is applying for a zone change. The, clearly, it is a commercial business and should be purchasing commercial property, which can be had. However, again, skirting regulations, the person, the business is asking that everyone else change their usage of this area of Wolf Lodge Bay, whether that be the eagle watchers, the swimmers, the boaters, the fishermen, the people who travel Highway 97, are all asked to accommodate this change of zoning, which is not in the best interest or safety of anyone concerned. In addition to that, I personally have been put in danger by traveling Highway 97 and coming down that blind curve, and on two occasions, on October 2nd and October 12th, I was surprised by a flagger. No advance notice, but a flagger for Mr. Condon's activity at that site. I reported both of those violations to IDT, and they suggested, they explained to me that although he has a permit for that site, he has to schedule a restricted lane change in advance with them. In both occasions, he did not do that. In both occasions, I was a driver, along with many other drivers, who just came upon this restricted, single lane usage, which is hardly in my best interest of safety or anyone else's. On Saturday, we, again, there was activity by North Idaho Marine with their trucks at that site, and they were not seen making a right-hand turn to exit. In fact, people at the, were standing at the boat launch when the truck apparently may, must have gone the other way, made a left-hand turn because it did not pass in front of anyone at that time, and then the truck was gone, North Idaho Marine vehicle. So my point is that enforcing regulations, not only zoning, but regulations for safety and welfare of the people, seems to be falling on us private citizens. And it is, in fact, you who have the duty to protect us and to protect the area, and to protect us, it is not in the best interest to make this zone change that will only further endanger us on the highway and on the water. And I would like to submit these for the record.
Okay. Questions for Jackie McNamara? Okay, we're gonna do one more group. I lied, I didn't realize we were that close. And so, and so what we'll do is, this is the final group presentation. We'll do this, it'll take 10 minutes, and then we'll break for 10, and then we'll resume with folks who are in support of the applicant. Okay, so Beth Twilman, Beth, come forward, please. And I'm gonna start, I'm gonna call out the names, please stand up. Susan Rasmussen. Where's Susan? There you are, okay. Richard Rasmussen. Savannah Casey. Thank you. Is it Hilda Elwelk, or Hilma Elvok? Thank you. Okay, Sue Ann Harns. Lori Ador. Daily, is it Hilke? Did I get that right? 7280 Panorama View Drive. She here? That's one down. Okay. Marie Boyd. Oh, it's Mark, forgive me. Okay. Kevin and Diana McHenry. Okay, and Jeff, Jeff Merkley. There's Jeff, okay. So we're missing two, and I think we're missing three.
We had 43 opposed and three, well, three, 43 that didn't sign up, and these people got hot and tired, they've been standing in the hall. So I would ask the commissioners to respect the other opposition that were, you've got those people on record.
Well, let me, let me ask once again, are Kevin and Diana McHenry here?
They were here.
They were here, they just went to here.
They had to stand the whole time. And they left, I think. They might be out.
Okay, so they were both present?
Yes.
All right, let's go. 10 minutes.
All right. Am I in, am I heard? This has been brought up.
Oh, your address, Beth.
Oh, Beth Twilman, 15143 South Esberry Road, Harrison, Idaho. Taking the scenic route, this is the booklet that Idaho Department of Transportation puts out now. Scenic byways are given that designation because they are scenic. Obtaining that designation is an honor to the state and a proven draw for tourism, money, and often wildlife. Idaho has been blessed with numerous scenic byways, one of the most famous in the Pacific Northwest. According to the guide, this book right here, is the Lake Coeur d'Alene Scenic Byway, Highway 97, from I-90 to Idaho Highway 3. As is stated in the aforementioned guide, this highway is home to bald eagles and the largest population of nesting osprey in the western United States. It offers panoramic views of the lake, et cetera. That was quoted right out of that book. Views which are now being threatened by a proposal by North Idaho Maritime to place a staging station for building their docks right at the very beginning of this protected scenic byway. Traveling around the area surrounding the many waterways in North Idaho, one will see signs that eagles are nesting nearby. Please keep noise to a minimum. Wolf Lodge Bay has hundreds of eagles come yearly. Some stay to nest year, throughout the year. I've seen them. Is the county truly willing to disrupt that with an industrial business right in the heart of eagle and osprey territory? Yes, industrial. As it does state on Mr. Condon's own application, somehow only the commercial designation has been brought into the zoning request. His application states, "commercial slash industrial." As confirmed by Bill Robertson of ITD, I spoke with him today, scenic byways, and I acknowledge this, they hold no legal restrictions for private property owners. But the state of Idaho puts faith in the decision makers, such as yourselves, that will maintain good decisions about proposed projects along certain roadways so that the scenic byway status guidelines will not be challenged or ignored. That has not always been the case, as some of you really know that well, in the past, with numerous projects allowed along Highway 97 in particular to progress regardless of the negative impact those projects have on the scenic byway views. This proposed zone change tonight to allow for North Idaho Maritime to eventually have a staging station would be detrimental to maintaining the intrinsic qualities that originally qualified this route to obtain such a respected designation. As shown in the designation process, and that is in your handout I gave you from this book, from the Department of Transportation, and this book is still valid today, I've, that's why I called ITV and made sure, those rules still apply. As shown in that, I've copied from the Federal Register, your decision tonight to allow a zone change for North Idaho Maritime to proceed with this commercial industrial project, it's going to put us in jeopardy. Now, it's a black eye. Scenic byways are given not lightly. It took a lot of effort and time, I think it was 1996 when this was actually gotten, and we had to go through federal regulations, and we had to do a lot of things. The citizens did that. It was a woman, actually, from Harrison that did that. And once we got it, then all of a sudden, now we start having things happen along the lake that have been poor decisions by past decision makers. This group, I'm not putting in that category because you have not had that come before you until tonight. It's bad enough, black eye, that the county has not taken the lake management plan serious enough to help in the cleanup of Lake Coeur d'Alene, and I copied that article that came right out of the Coeur d'Alene Press. The tribe has now left the lake management plan. That is a huge, huge black eye to Cootney County and, and really, North Idaho, because that allows the federal government to now come in and take over the cleanup of Lake Coeur d'Alene, which means EPA could be in here designating us a superfund site, which we are, and making it more public than it's ever been public in the past. And to allow a scenic byway to be disposed of for one private business owner is a very serious mistake, and I really hope that you think very closely about what you're doing. I don't want to see the scenic byway status taken, but quite honestly, after talking to this Mr. Robertson, I would put myself on the agenda for the State of Transportation Board to discuss this at their next meeting if this thing is approved, because we cannot continue to have this kind of thing happen to our beauty in North Idaho. Everything's been threatened as far as environment, beauty, and yes, aesthetics do count. Rand said it's been commercial already. Well, it's supported commercial use when a lot less persons were driving that highway at that point, and I'm kind of trying to do a little bit of a rebuttal here since I think I still have some time. He also said that the client looked for years in sites, he couldn't find one. Well, there were plenty of sites available, but at a bigger price, and we can go back and look at the mill sites that were recently in the last 10 years sold. He didn't choose to move there, that was more expensive land. He came into this area, cheaper land, and then I'll just get it rezoned and I'll go forward with my, with my whole plan. Rand said this is property unsuitable for anything else. I don't think so. There would be plenty of people willing to put a small home on that site, a restricted residential, and, and enjoy the lake as it should be enjoyed. Rand said no intention to store docks there. If this would be approved, which I hope it is not, I would hope somebody could put a restriction on that ability for him to store docks there, because in the past, it's been proven he'll do what's not in writing, and then he'll even do it then, and sometimes I just, I just feel like that is an incredible trust you're putting in somebody who hasn't got a very good background for that. So, all the stats on traffic, who's gonna be enforcing those? When, as Ms. McNamara said, you drive down the highway and you see something happening, we take pictures, we take them into these departments, and they look at us like we're crazy. They don't do anything, and they will call the sheriff. Well, the sheriff might take 40, 50, 60 minutes to get there. Most of you who've driven that highway know, we are not in their prime area. We are in an area that has a ton of traffic, and in the summertime, it is so bad that I've got pictures of cars, 18-long, you know, line of cars, and for all those people to be put out by somebody's private business in that dangerous area, I think is just putting all of us in danger. So I don't think it's the public's place to find a spot for him, as he keeps saying, if not here, where? That's his, that's his problem. And if he can't get along and can't do what he was needing to do over where he is now, that's his problem, not ours. So please, think about all of these things and the public at large, and take into real consideration, please take some time to consider this, possibly make a site visit. Drive that highway yourself, but those two areas, going east and west, and see for yourself how you'd like to come down that area and see a major truck coming out. Sometimes common sense is what should ring. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay, questions for Beth? Okay, so, thank you. We're gonna take it, we're gonna take a, so, once again, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. If you've already spoken or given up your time, please consider that there are folks who'd like to be seated. It is unlikely that we're gonna be deliberating tonight, so if you're waiting for that, you might be disappointed. Nevertheless, we'll take the 10 minutes and we'll resume with support for the applicant.
The rest are what?
Family law has a 2 o'clock. So, this is empty. So, this one's definitely available. If you want to do that right now.
Okay, folks, so the time is now 8:32. We're continuing. I'm sorry, but I forgot to mention the time of our recess, but I estimate that was probably around 8:15. Okay, so what we're going to do, a little housekeeping here. It looks like we have room for everyone who chooses to be seated. So, what we're going to do is we're going to resume with those folks who are in favor of the applicant and wish to speak. We are going to wrap up at 9 o'clock. This will be a continued meeting. Those who have spoken tonight will not be speaking again. It's going to be, we're going to continue for those folks who have not had an opportunity to speak. It sounds like we still have about 20 folks who want to speak. So, what's going to happen is we're going to continue this on January 2nd, and it's going to be a split session, 2 o'clock and 6 o'clock. We've done this once before with a comprehensive plan, and it works out well, because folks who don't want to travel or are retired can show up at 6, and folks who are working can sho, excuse me, at 2, and folks who are working can show up at 6. More than likely, after the 6 o'clock session on the 2nd, we will deliberate at that point. I say more than likely, it's probably going to be the case. So, in any case, that's what we're looking at. The 2 o'clock time slot is available on January 2nd, as is the 6 o'clock. So, we are now going to resume, and the first person to speak will be Mr. Ron Nielsen, who's been waiting patiently, who arrived at 5 o'clock, but anyway. And Ron is in favor and does wish to speak. Take your 3 minutes, Ron.
My age, you gotta wait till I get it to my age.
Yeah, okay, we'll wait. We're not going to time the walk, don't worry about it.
This one or this one? Does it matter?
Either one is fine.
This one?
That sound better?
As long as you can hear me, I don't care if they hear me or not. So, my name's Ron Nielsen, I live at 4761 West Mobery River Court in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I own a business here called Ground Force Manufacturing, Ground Force Worldwide. I've lived here for 19 years. I love being a part of this community. I think it's the greatest community I've ever even seen before. I know most of the major business owners in our community, and have helped rally them together and work together to help us build some important structures in our community, which is Boys and Girls Club. We built two of those, CTE Campus, K-Tech, and a number of chamber buildings. I tell you that because the key word is these are the business communities that put into their pocket and raised the money. And together, we raised this $20 million. Our community is known for its beautiful lakes, quality of life, and tourism is getting to be a bigger, bigger part of this. But we know what happens when the tourism goes down. We suffered, and we did that back in 1984 and back before then. But let's not forget about the businesses here that pay the taxes, the businesses here that contribute back to this community, the businesses that will hire our kids and our grandkids. When someone builds a house on the lake, they need a dock to go on there. I built a house on the river, I needed a dock. And so, when this happens, we might as well keep it here. I live on the river in Coeur d'Alene, and my house, to get onto the lake, I had to go by the old mill site, the Atlas Mill Site, and I passed Johnny Condon's North Idaho Maritime Facility there, sometimes four times in a day, watched the work going on. Johnny's done work on almost all of our neighbors there, and I can tell you that never once did I have a concern about his ability to maintain a clean environment, to do it safely. And for people to insinuate that Johnny has done something wrong, I disagree with that, because I know him personally. So, I was real curious, who's against this? And as I started doing it, I found this piece of paper called Action Alert, and I read through it, and one of the things that jumped out at me, and it says, "They may be planning a noisy and ugly business." When you're retired, or you don't work in this industry, everything is noisy and ugly. But this is the world we live in. The United States of America is the greatest country in the world, and we build stuff, around the world. People say, well, you say built in America by Americans, yeah, we build product, we, and we ship it to Kazakhstan, to Batam, Indonesia, and to England, and then we send our crew and we do the assembly on site in those countries. So if you add that up together, a little over two hundred.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
Hey, thank for what you guys do, I couldn't do this.
Sometimes I wonder if we can. Thank you. Okay, there's a little, I was going to say, a little gentleman, a little man, who was concerned about his bedtime. I think it's great that he wants to contribute, is he still here? It's Wallace? I guess we must have exceeded his bedtime. Anyway, don't know his position, but he did want to speak. Let's try to clean, get to these, George Saylor, you wish to speak? Yeah, you didn't indicate your.
Stumble, stumble.
What's your position?
I'm speaking in opposition.
Okay.
So, my name is George Saylor, I live eleven oh two Ash Avenue, and with all due respect to Mr. Nielsen, I am one of those who opposes this. We have different values, different concerns, and that's the nature of our democracy, and that's a good thing, I think. We need discussion on issues. I've been here in Coeur d'Alene for about fifty years, this proposal, which would transform one of our most beautiful areas into a commercial zone, is to me, my personal perspective, a very egregious proposal, one of the worst I've heard concerning our lake since I've been here. I have many reasons for opposing this request, but with all the comments that have been made, I don't want to repeat them, so I will only say, first of all, I think this is one of the most aesthetically beautiful areas in our area, northern part of Lake Coeur d'Alene. And with the rapid growth that we have.
Can you try to get a little closer to the mic?
Yes, with the rapid growth that we have, open and natural spaces will only become more important. Keeping the area natural, I believe, is in the best interest of the wider community of Cootney County. I think this spot rezoning, allowing commercial use of this area, would be a bad precedent that would weaken our comprehensive planning process. I realize the process creates an option for rezoning, but to allow one that's essentially benefiting a commercial enterprise at the expense of a valuable and much-loved area of the lake seems to contradict the comprehensive plan, which calls for protecting our natural resources and water quality. I think allowing this rezone would undermine the public confidence in our comprehensive plan and could encourage others to make similar requests. And finally, what I want to amplify more on is the threat to the wildlife habitat that this proposal presents. As a member of the Audubon Society, which has gone on record as opposing this, I am concerned mostly with bird life, but in addition, we must keep in mind what a biologically rich area wetlands and small bays are. These areas provide habitat for a wide variety of animal and plant species, microbes, insects, and more. The complex interrelationships among these life forms, which is not, which if not threatened, help to maintain the healthy ecosystem and protect water quality, provide recreational opportunity, and even absorb carbon, which is something that's critically important. A number of organizations have done exhaustive studies based on massive data about bird population trends, and the bad news is the majority of bird species in North America are in decline, and climate change and habitat destruction are the two main culprits. Audubon Society issued a report outlining that three hundred and eighty-nine species of birds in the United States are at risk of extinction. It even highlights local loss of birds such as in Cootney County. And there are forty-two species at significant risk, significant risk, including four ducks that are out in Wolf Lodge Bay, buffalo head, lesser scalp, grebes, and common goldenite. So there is that concern about wildlife habitat, I think.
It's not working.
That is an issue.
George, you have about ten seconds, you're having a problem with the lights.
We've lost a big portion of our wetlands in the, our history. Where that has occurred, wildlife, waterfowl have decreased, where there's been restoration efforts, they have increased. This area doesn't need restoration, it simply needs protection. Thank you.
Yeah, let's put this one aside for now. Okay, so Craig Cozad? Your address, please, you are in favor, in support of the applicant.
Yes, hi, it's Craig Cozad, one twenty East Anton Avenue, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I grew up here, born and raised here in North Idaho, and on Lake Coeur d'Alene my whole life. I'm up here for two reasons, I'm in favor, I want to talk about John Condon as a character witness. I've had a boat moored down at Blackwell Island, the Yacht Club, since two thousand and five, have been neighbors with his tugboats, right beside my recreation boat, and been a great neighbor, always very courteous, they come and go, they keep tight ship. We need people like John on the lake to build docks for people that own property on the lake, and I've owned two pieces of property on Lake Coeur d'Alene, and he's done one dock for me, and he's a man of his word, the deal that we made was the deal that was had. He's a great, great person in the community as far as a businessman, and also I'd like to talk about the lot on Highway ninety-seven, I've driven by that for many, many years, growing up here, and the lot, since John's bought it,'s been cleaned up and looks a lot nicer than it did when it was sitting there empty. And the lot was for sale, and he bought it, and he owns the lot. So I, just in favor for what he designs, or desires to build, thank you.
Any questions for Craig? Okay, Kelly Browner? Kelly, are you here? Okay, no indication, okay. John Magnussen, in favor, is John here? Here he is.
I thought he was the bedtime guy.
You don't get intros like this all the time, John.
Thank you, Commissioners, my name's John Magnussen, twelve fifty Northwood Center Court, Coeur d'Alene. I came tonight because I got this thing in the mail that Ron called an action alert, and I think in your deliberations and consideration of the information to make a reasoned decision, I would hope the facts are still important. Because I sat and listened to this this evening, I thought I walked into the deliberations on the prison release center. Let's not lose sight of what we're talking about here. We're talking about two vehicles an hour during working hours, we're talking about a business that doesn't operate during November, December, low-water periods of time, which I'm also told is the eagle habitat prime period, so he's not even there. And he's got a less intensive use than uses that have been on the property before. Facts matter, that property used to be a commercial property, it was a restaurant. I heard a reference to it as a purported restaurant, I know, I ate there, I live to tell about it. My brother went to the senior prom there. The Green Dolphin, a fine place, apparently its business model went by the way of the Edsel, but it did exist. Mr. Corsi, Fish and Game, said no impact on the salmon spawning, said it was a mud flat. There's a reason it's a mud flat, because at statehood, we didn't have a dam, and when Wolf Lodge Bay was homesteaded in approximately nineteen oh four, I know, I read the homestead papers from the National Archives, gentleman went out and farmed all of what is now Wolf Lodge Bay, in large part towards the rear, because it was a hay field. And then we had a dam in nineteen oh six, and then the water level rises, and that's why Mr. Condon owns, when you look at the map, twenty-plus acres that are under the water during the summer, below what the state says is the ordinary high watermark, which is kind of an oxymoron, because the state claims the beds, but the county taxes Mr. Condon for twenty acres there. When we talk about the traffic issues, he's already got a permit. I mean, let's think what he's done with that permit, or what he proposes to do here. He proposes to limit it to two vehicles an hour. If he, if he didn't rezone it and include that condition, John could have ten of his friends and family over in a car without a right lane, right in, right out limitation, he has ten of them over, because we know he's got enough parking, and they could all recreate off of the property and create more of an intensive use. Are we really to suggest that these two vehicles, every hour, are going to cause some deleterious impact with traffic on Highway ninety-seven that doesn't already exist down the entirety of the east side of the lake? It's preposterous. In closing, I'd like to say, there was a statement made about Mr. Condon violating a permit out on Hayden Lake, I didn't know we were going to talk about this tonight, I got Mr. Condon along with him that permit. Mr. Condon went through the front door, has a permit to operate on Hayden Lake, and let it be known, it's not in some pristine recreational setting, it's next to the outflow of the dike, which you can't be on the dike unless you're trespassing. Perfect place. Last comment, you know, God save the, God save the dock builders. Where have we come in our community? A community built on mining and timber, and here you got a guy drives a tugboat and a barge, and he's told, this is about aesthetics, you're told that this is somehow going to interfere with the pristine habitat of eagles and salmon? That's our heritage.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. Kathy?
The light has ceased to function, so just listen for the buzz.
Okay, listen for, is there going to be a thirty-second buzz?
I can, yes.
Please, okay. Before we go any further, I wanted to ask our attorney, Pat Braden, to comment on, excuse me, the claim that was made, if I can use that term, regarding a violation of due process. Pat, would you care to speak?
I'll come up so everybody can hear, hear me. I usually speak pretty loud anyway, so, at least when I'm at these, these types of meetings. There were two issues concerning due process that have been raised. One, the notice, I think Mr. Callahan more than adequately went over that in his opening comments, it is the county, you know, everything, all the notice that's within the county's control was done properly, and I think, you know, measures were taken immediately by both the press and the city of Coeur d'Alene to mitigate the incorrect information that was in this morning's paper. The other due process issue that has been raised was the, having to do with the parcel, and whether, whether it's only the portion north of Highway ninety-seven and above the ordinary high watermark of Coeur d'Alene Lake, or the property that the Condon's own in their entirety. And I'm just going to read from the public hearing agenda notice on case number zero N one eight dash zero zero one six, the second sentence reads as follows, "The portion of the parcel for this request is a peninsula north of Highway ninety-seven and above the ordinary high watermark, one twenty-eight point seven feet per the NAV, NAVD eighty-eight datum, of Lake Coeur d'Alene, approximately zero point five acres in size." I think that makes the subject of the zone change request abundantly clear, and nothing in the applicant's presentation would cause me to believe any differently. So I do believe the due process, it has, concerns have been satisfied in this, in this hearing, and I don't think they're an issue.
Any questions for Pat? Oh, thank you, Pat. Okay, so once again, folks, if you've already signed up to forfeit your time to a group speaker, you've basically forfeited that time, so we're moving on with folks who have not done that, who choose to speak independently or individually. So, Mr. Greg Delavan, come forward, Greg, in favor, in favor, in support of the applicant wishes to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners, I understand that it's late, and I know how much you guys love this stuff, so I'm going to be very brief, you won't hear hyperol from me. I'm going to.
Name and address. Name and address.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Name and address.
Greg Delavan, Booth Park Road, Coeur d'Alene. Most people know. So, what I am going to say is, I, you know, I too grew up in Wolf Lodge Bay, I've been around there for a long, long time, I remember the Green Dolphin, we had a commercial property down there, and it's now, I think erroneously zoned, restricted residential, that should be corrected. What John wants to do down there is a good use of that property, it's, it's one of the few places he could do that, and we really need that service on the north end of the lake. I can speak for, for many of the lake owners, I'm the president of Lakeshore Association, and as such, I get a lot of calls when people have problems. Now, historically, it might be months or even years before you can get somebody to come fix your problem, and they happen a lot, especially in high water, when the water's coming up, the dock starts jamming against the approach, you know, I can call John, and he'll be there in a day or two. We need that service on the lake, and the Lakeshore Owners Association needs that service on the lake, and our board has agreed to support this operation because it's a valuable public service. I, I can speak directly for John and his method of operation, because I let him load off my boat ramp. He's in there frequently when it's, when he's got a job going in the neighborhood, and they, they clean up after themselves, they take good care of their equipment, they're polite, they help the, the neighbors, the fishermen when they're out there, they're good neighbors, and they should be allowed to operate. We need that kind of service in Cootney County. And out of respect for your time, I'm going to quit.
Okay, any questions for Greg? Martha, you're in favor, you wish to speak, Martha Cook.
Martha Cook, twenty-five oh three West Presley Road. I agree with Mr. Wickman and Mr. Condon, if not here, where else? I think that it, some importance has to be made, has to be given, to the historic uses that have gone on in our county for, for over a hundred years. Waterfront work with boats and barges has been an intrinsic part of our past, and is still part of our present, should still be part of our future. Boat use, work in boats and barges have been of great economic importance to our county. I looked on Wikipedia to see what is said, there's no comprehensive book out there written about waterfront work on Lake Coeur d'Alene that I know of, I've been plowing through bookstores, I've been online, but in the late fifties, the Lafferty business had twelve tugs to tow logs, and they were towing up to a hundred and twenty-five million board feet every year on Lake Coeur d'Alene. There were six major sawmills in the late fifties, I won't name them, but there were still seven or eight when my husband, Oscar Mooney, started working for Lafferty in nineteen You can describe Idaho topographically as a myriad system of, of river systems, you've got the salmon, you've got the snakes, the clearwater, the lox saw, the selway, the pack, the yak, the Coeur d'Alene, the peat, the joe. But Cootney County can be described also as a system of rivers and lakes. Since white men were here and before that, humans have used the lakes and the rivers for transportation, they have moved men, ore, timber, equipment, and other materials using our waterways. If you go back to the book Sweet Homestead, written by an ancestor of my husband's, you'll see that the roads were horrible, if there were roads at all, they were muddy, they were terrible, and part of the year you couldn't use them. Men like my husband's great-grandfather brought his first milk cow home by raft, because there was no way to bring her home by road, and the trail was terrible. He lived at Sweet, Twin Beaches. Prior to nineteen seventeen, according to Wikipedia, Harrison was to be the county seat because of its convenience, its proximity to the Saint Joe River and the Coeur d'Alene River.
So you've got thirty seconds.
This book, written in fifty-two, called Steamboats and the Timber, refers to Lake Coeur d'Alene as the magnificent mill pond. There are many more books out there that talk about the waterfront industry, the thirties, with Hap Murphy, my first ninety years. Tom Emerson wrote a book about Fred Murphy, A Legend on Coeur d'Alene Lake. It doesn't take long to find any number of books telling you about the incredible importance of our lakefront work and our use of the lake for hauling men, materials, and timber. Thank you.
Okay, Russell D. Brown. Is Russell here? Here you go. You are also in favor, Russ?
I am.
And wish to speak. Address, please.
Twenty-one twelve North Stagecoach Drive, Falls Falls, Idaho. Just a couple heads up, a different angle maybe, but one, I was born on the corner of Third and Foster, eighty years. of Third and Foster eighty years ago this coming June, so I have seen the comings and goings of the area quite a bit. I still live here and spent most of my life within the county. A little history about tugboats and the boatmen on Coeur d'Alene is that ever since the Amelia Whitten was built in 1880, shortly within six months, I assure you, there was a tugboat. And of course, that served all the way up to the mission, and it gathered the hay from the Indians and different things. They took passengers up and down to the goldfields. A lot of the steamboats did. Those are steamboats. On the other hand, you can't have a steamboat or a pliable citizenry around a lake without some tugboats. Whether it has to do with building or repairing highways and bridges nearby, or homes to be built, houses to be moved across the lake, things to be raised from the bottom, pilings to be driven, logs to be floated, boomed up, pushed or pulled, machinery to be moved, docks and walkways, lakeshore fire assistance, dock moving and building, even emergency help and services that they have done for the county when various search and rescue parties can't get there fast enough. You say, how does that happen? One thing, I went to school with Fred Murphy's kids, Lauren and Skip and the little gal that was so cute, Linda, I think her name was. And I assure you, their school bus was the tugboat. That was it. That's all we had in those days, or they did. I knew several of the families that are still in the area, the Finneys. I went to school with a Bill Lafferty, Bill or Dick, I can't remember what his name was, and of course, the Murphys. All that to say, ever since about 1900, I feel safe in saying there has been hundreds of tugboats, at least well over a hundred, on this lake. As a previous lady said, Laffertys alone had twelve tugboats at one time. Several of these tugboats were up to and including eighty to ninety feet. To mention five of them, the St. Mary's, the Sampson, the Pine Cap, the Cougar, and the Golden Star, which was ninety feet. I know he does not plan to build or have ninety-foot tugboats on the lake, and I just, I just say that from all I've heard, I feel confident that it's the best thing. If he wants to go through all the permitting process of over eleven agencies that I've written down, and I won't repeat, if he wants to go through all that, I say he ought to be able to do what he wants with his own land. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Okay. Okay, so before we entertain a motion to continue to January 2nd, I have a question for Director Callahan. Did you address the question earlier, Dave, on what happens if it's denied in the automatic appeal? Or did I miss that?
I can answer that.
However you guys want to handle it. Don't fight over it. Thank you, Pat.
If, okay. Okay. If, at the, once the public, once the public hearing is concluded and during deliberations it is apparent that there would at least be a majority vote to, in this case, deny the application, since the hearing examiner recommendation was to approve, then that would be a material change to the recommendation of the hearing examiner that would necessitate another public hearing.
Okay.
And that's in addition to the continued hearing on the second.
Oh, that would be in addition to the continued hearing?
That is correct.
Okay, so you've answered the broader question. Okay, fine. And I presume you would need a motion for continuance? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And just, another note, just to put it on the record as much as anything, if you continue it to a date and time certain, which I understand is going to be the case, you do not need to renotice. According to the Local Land Use Planning Act, the only other notice required is the Open Meetings Law Notice.
Okay. Although I imagine we'll be noticing anyway on Facebook, correct? And on our webpage? Okay, so be looking for it. So then I'll entertain a motion for continuance?
I move that we continue this public hearing to January 2nd for a time of 2:00 PM, and then we'll take a break, and then continue the hearing at 6:00 PM that day, and then probably end up in deliberations. So if you can't make it at 2:00, then there is 6:00 o'clock that night. We'll take testimony at both of those times.
I second the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion is carried. The time is now 9:04 PM, and this meeting is continued to January 2nd. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy holiday, Merry Christmas.